Public comment.
Yeah, is anybody here for public comment items that are not on the agenda? The first item we have is a public hearing, transfer of license for Curtis Liquors is representatives here. If you don't mind, I just have to find, my computer is not booting up, so please, thank you. I'm gonna read the public hearing notice and then I'll ask you to introduce yourselves to the board. The Cohasset Board of Selectment acting as liquor licensing authority will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, October 23rd, 2018 at 7:05 PM in the Selectmen's Office, Town Hall, 41 Highland Ave. To consider the application for Curtis Liquor Stores Incorporated, DBA Curtis Liquors, 790 Chief Justice Cushing Highway pledge and transfer its annual all alcohol beverages, Section 15, package store license to Yogi Raj Corp., DBA Curtis Liquors, same address. The proposed owner-manager is J.A. Patel. The license premises is approximately 13,500 square feet. There is one entrance and two exits. The public is invited to offer public input on this proposal in writing in advance of the public hearing or in person at the hearing. So, welcome. If you could introduce yourselves for the record.
Sure. Good evening, my name is Matthew Porter, I'm the attorney for Yogi Raj Corp.
My name is Jay Patel, I'm the president of the association.
Okay, welcome aboard.
Thank you. So before the board tonight, this is a transfer of license that relates to sale of Curtis Liquors, 790 Chief Justice Cushing Highway. Mr. Patel is president, treasurer, secretary, director of the applicant. He'll also be the acting manager of the store, the 100% shareholder. Mr. Patel has nearly two decades of experience in the liquor industry. He's owned and operated several other large locations. He's also been a secretary of Bass Path Association. So certainly well-versed, you know, in this field, understands all the responsibilities that come along with operating a liquor store of this nature. It's been a very smooth transaction thus far. Our lease is in place, all of our financing is in order. And as far as plans moving forward, no major changes expected to the store, no structural changes. Mr. Curtis, the current owner who's here with us tonight, will be staying on in capacity as a consulting role for the next three years, which I think will make it a very smooth transition from Mr. Curtis to Mr. Patel. Donny Barros, who's also with us tonight as the general manager of the store, he's also gonna be staying on. The plan is to retain all the employees that are there. And certainly, I can answer any questions that you may have regarding the applicant. And Mr. Patel is here as well to answer any questions.
Okay, you wanna start?
Yeah, Mr. Patel, what other large operations have you run?
So we, I have Powers Liquors about 20 years ago. It's one of the big stores that I started with, is next to Market Basket. And then we have Austin Liquors in Worcester, that we took over. And then I have Acton Wine and Spirit that we took over. And then we have Liquor World in Milford. So all, all large, big box stores that we run.
And those are still owned by your entity?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm different entity, but I'm the owner of the entity.
Do you anticipate retaining the Curtis name, or changing it some way?
Yes, yes, that's the power of the entity.
Okay, thank you.
Jack?
Good. Just a welcome.
Thank you, sir.
Do you, did I get, just make sure I have that right, do you still operate those other businesses? Do you still have ownership in them, did you say?
Yes.
Yourself? Cause you 100% own this?
Yes, I'm 100% on this, but then I have partners on the other ones.
Any other ones, right. So you've had several that you've been partners with. Is this the only one you've ever owned?
I have Powers Liquors, I'm 100%, my, I've managed that one there. And this is the 100% liquor store that I'm gonna manage myself, yes.
Okay. And you're familiar with the regulations, so have you ever had any violations of liquor regulations in them?
No, no.
Where you been?
No.
In the 20 years, you've had no problems?
We have one employee 16, 17 years ago. I mean, not myself, I never, I never had any problems.
Other than that incident, but there's nothing else. And that didn't show up on our background check, that incident?
No.
Okay, no more questions.
Yeah, what's the anticipated kinda timeline in terms of the actual trade?
Sure, so, yeah, so a lot of it, as you know, is dependent upon the ABCC, who's been a little bit, you know, quicker as of late. So I would anticipate, you know, probably approval from the ABCC within about two to three weeks. And we're shooting for an end in November, closing date in December. So, everything else is in order other than state approval. So as soon as we have that, we're pretty much ready to go.
And then literally, Mr. Patel, do you kinda move in when it's closing, or are you starting to get familiar with the transactions?
Like, you know, like Matt says, Mr. Rick, Curtis will be here, Don will be here, and myself will be here in and out. So we're gonna be running the same operation that these people are running for the last 30, 40 years, and we continue with the same employee, same way the store is running, there's not gonna be any changes.
Okay, perfect, alright.
One quick thing, at the end of the year, they usually recycle all licenses, you know, I think it's a January?
Yeah, so, yeah, and Rick actually spoke with your office about this earlier today. So what will happen is, you know, Rick will pay the licensing fee now, and then we'll just prorate it at closing, so we're well aware of that.
Towards the end of the year?
Yep, yep, we're, I think we're on, we're on the same page of that.
Okay, great. Is there anybody from the public that wants to speak on this matter? Mr. Curtis, thank you for all your years, if you wanna say something?
Well, yeah, if I may, it was almost to the day, 29 years ago, that I was before this board, of course, different faces and names, humbly requesting permission to transfer from Mr. Logan, Cohasset Liquors, to me. And here I am today, asking for the same privilege to do the same thing to Jay Patel. And I have to tell you that I've known Jay in the business now for some time, at events and meetings in our industry. And he's been a board director on our association for over 10 years now. But I've gotten to really know him the last 60, 70 days, and I found him to be a man of integrity and a man of his word. And I have truly enjoyed doing business in this town. And I've met so many wonderful people in Cohasset. And I've, any opportunity that I've had, I've tried to pay it forward, if you will, and to contribute to the community. And I know Jay is going to, is to follow, take the baton and continue to do that as well. So I wanna thank you all. I really have enjoyed doing business in this town.
Congratulations.
Thank you, that's very nice to hear.
What are you gonna do?
Uh, there are a lot of things that I wanna do that I haven't had a chance to do, but also I'll be, I'll be working for a while, you know, and helping Jay and my general manager of 37 years, so he knows quite a bit about the business. I hired him when he was 18 years ago in Whitman, in my Whitman store. And the poor, poor guy is still whipping.
So somebody's doing something right.
Yes, so hopefully a little bit more golf and skiing.
Well, congratulations.
Congratulations to everybody.
For your time. Okay, would somebody like to make a motion to, from our point of view, and then this will get approved by the state ABCC, to transfer the liquor, for Curtis, uh, transfer the license for Curtis Liquor Stores to owner-manager Jay Patel?
So move.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Great, unanimous, congratulations.
Good luck with the ABCC.
Thank you.
Next up is the common victualer's license for Nwinn's Kitchen. Is there anybody here presenting Nwinn's Kitchen? They were here a couple weeks ago, and got a liquor license for the establishment, which is in the old Cocoa Island space up on Chief Justice Cushing Highway. So all we need is-
You forgot the four restaurants.
They didn't have the longevity.
Cocoa Island. Slowly returned, step by step.
Is there a hearing notice for this? Sorry, I gotta, I gotta log into my computer in two seconds. Okay. Is, would, does anybody have any questions to comment?
So move.
So the, the motion is to approve a common victualer's license. Wait a minute, there's, there's others on here. So their application, seven-day all alcohol license.
What are you looking at?
So I have a copy of, hang on.
Oh, just, I gave you my-
The only, I, I see what it says. The only thing that actually applied for it, the only thing that paid us for it is a common vic.
Okay. So what they did was, they, they asked for an entertainment license as well, and they were doing video games. But they weren't sure on the schedule of the entertainment or the video games that they didn't buy. So they told, they crossed out and told Jen that they would come back and do it separately. So I don't know if that was crossed out of the common or not.
There's no such thing as a seven-day all alcohol license.
Yeah, that surprised me. Okay, so right now-
It's entertainment, it's supposed to be entertainment and-
So, right now, the only motion we need to make is, is to approve a common victualer's license for Nwinn's Kitchen at 156 King Street.
So move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Chris, while I log on on my computer, I'm gonna ask you to update us, public, in public session, on these two library contracts.
So the library contract is, is close, but we have some technical things we haven't worked yet. We'll agree on all substantive terms. On the clerical contract, there was some inadvertent, what I, what I would call scribblers errors, a couple of sections that were stricken, which should have shown as being stricken, or not, even though they've replaced our language or something. So I provided the board with these red stripes, these red-stricken language, and just one small clause in blue, where we had discussed clarifying the language, and it just, it just, the version of it was provided, missed the, covered by this collective bargaining, because the, when the union just wants to know when people are hired, who fit into the bargaining, because under the new rules, it's, they're not, members are not automatically union members. So they have the right to get in contact, and so that's all that. And they wanted just updates, and we wanted to make sure that it was clear, there was justice. They don't get, unless they have every single person who's been hired by the town, just to be fully covered in terms of the contracts. So I, those were the only, they're, they're, those are the only changes. I'd ask the board just to, just to ratify, or I should say, adopt the modifications to the MOU, and then I'll circuit that over to the contract. There's no substantive changes, these are just-
Okay, does somebody wanna make a motion to modify the clerical MOU as discussed?
So move.
Do you second?
Second.
Okay, any comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, annual budget message, sorry, so we discussed this at our last meeting, to some degree. I asked for recommended changes. The only thing we discussed, material change at the last meeting, was under capital priorities and funding plans. Got it. I think it's in a different plot size. Was a question, advisory board had recommended that we consider asking the town manager to present to the board of selection for adoption some kind of formula to address for capital appropriations in the, in the FY20 budget. So Steve, I did change one, two, couple of words, but Steve and I recommend that, so that underneath number three, established capital priorities and funding plans, the fourth bullet, that replace language that basically said that the town manager would present a formula to the board of selection for capital funding. This is a little more specific to, that the town manager shall present for board of selection adoption, a formulation for annual capital funding, sufficient to meet identified prioritized annual capital maintenance and additions. So what it really, kinda the nuanced difference here is that it recognizes that whatever formula we do come up with for capital funding, it, it should meet the, the maintenance of whatever capital assets the town has. That was missing from the previous language.
Just, uh- Just sort of my reaction is, though, is that how do you, how do you come up with a formula, you know, to make decisions about, you know, all the capital possibilities we might have? It seems to me that decisions like that, when we make them, a formula might be helpful as one part, but we'd also wanna be looking at, you know, the social-political landscape, or what the needs are of the town, and other things. It just seems to me, straightjacketing ourselves or future boards to a formula, I don't see how that, how that would work. And that, in reality, from what I've seen, those things sometimes, it sounds good, but then they go out and apply it two years, three years from now, and they say, well, that's nice, but what we really wanted to, you know, for various reasons, we had, because we were bored, things in that broader way. So I just throw that out.
The basis for it, Kevin, is not to, not to, there's no way that you're going to produce a, a structure that would anticipate, for example, funding vehicles, IT, playground reconstruction, and oh, by the way, we're building a new building. Right? That, that can't happen. The concept in, in writing it this way is to make certain that we have a, a structural notion of what that dollar amount is going to be in order to meet those things that are known, and, and are priorities. So that comes right back around to what is the capital plan. And it, it effectively enforces future boards with the same notion that we're paying attention to how that funding is being done, that it doesn't become a football, but rather becomes part of our, our structural process. That, the goal there is to outlast our board, and frankly, to outlast our town manager, right? Process out those people. And if we don't do something about it, at this point, by acknowledging that, up to this point, we've done a great job with capital, but we're still underfunded versus our baseline, our baseline depreciation, then we're going to fight this battle, or the town will fight this battle, at some point in the future. By the way, there, there is a, a specific choice of words here. It's not a formula, but a formulation. Tell us how you're going to do it, because we recognize that on a year-to-year basis, the numbers change. They, and hopefully, our goal is that we are sufficiently funding it, but not, to your, your words, not straightjacketing ourselves into either cutting stuff off or spending frivolously.
The one thing I was just gonna, was gonna add, what is that, this is the FY20 budget guidance, so it's not a policy. It's, it's, it's what we're gonna be looking at, at this year, in the, in the formulation, to use, borrow that word, of the FY20 budget. So it's really just coming, asking the town manager, and when we discussed it at the last meeting, capital budget was, not capital budget, advisory, was, was requesting a very specific formula, that it would be X percentage of the difference between the roll-off of debt service, and da-da-da-da. So this watered it down a little bit, but I think it's more or less just trying to find some guidance to make sure that we are doing what we need to do to maintain the, the capital assets in town, in addition to funding any new, any new projects. If, you know, if there's a word that somebody would like to recommend, change-
One thing you could do is just to, yeah, I mean, it's a good idea to keep it like as a tool that's there, is, is maybe say, town manager shall present the beer as adoption, a formulation karma as part of the decision-making process, and of karma for annual capital funding. So it creates everything that you want, but it just says, use it as you think best. Just so you don't, actually, when I'm thinking further about it, you know, when this gets to, cause the capital committee's the one that this is gonna affect the most, right? I mean, they may-
No.
It affects, affects the town the most.
It's also the town manager that determines the budget.
Oh, I understand, but when you use language like this-
Right.
The capital budget's gonna be, yeah, the committee's gonna be influenced by this language, right? Well, should, or we would expect them to be, right? All I'm just saying is make it into like a tool, use it, keep it, but just, I can see possibly this going to a board like that, and saying, first of all, I'd be interested to see, and I don't wanna belabor this, but I'd be interested to see this formulation when I see it. But when we see it, you know, it may create more confusion than we're anticipating. But if we point out in the beginning, this is a tool, one of the tools, a major tool even, you've got wiggle room for everybody. And, but we still have the discipline criteria that I, I sensed as being handed to you karma there, you know, which is good.
I, I think this is-
Did I say that nicely?
So could I, could I maybe suggest to get to Kevin's point without adding any, any more words, but could, could we say, and it is implied in the other bullets, to be honest, I think it actually says it, but this bullet says, town manager shall present a recommended capital budget sufficient to meet identified prioritized annual capital maintenance and additions. I mean, or recommend funding.
Well, that, that makes more sense in terms of, that is direction for this year.
Right, well, that's what this budget-
So we might run it that way, and then maybe we or a future board can make it into a formula. So I-
Does that water down what, I mean, what advisory was asking us to consider was, is there something, is it, you know, and maybe it's a policy that we discuss off-
Your-
The FY20 budget message.
Back up for just a second. I, I'll paraphrase for the, for advisory chairman sitting here.
Good timing, I didn't see it.
What they, what, what advisory was asking for was something that was durable. Season, a budget season, a budget season, because in, in effect, they're not looking at this from a budgeting standpoint, but they're actually looking at it from a policy standpoint.
Right.
Alright, and so, from a, for a budget message, I think the, the, the edit is fine. I do believe that the board needs to consider a policy that takes on a formulation structure, simple as that.
I agree.
And, Don?
Yeah.
Formulation makes it sound like it's a mathematical equation. I mean, the language people use in other towns is, you know, the capital budget shall be 5% of the town's appropriated budget, up to, you know, I'm making up a number, a million and a half dollars, right? I mean, that's how simple it gets, right? And I think that's what you guys are asking for, is a very specific number. And you're giving Chris wiggle room to actually put the capital budget together before he comes back to us and says, this is what we need. Am I misreading what's going on here?
No, but to Steve's point, this is the FY20 budget message.
Right.
So maybe, and this is what I said in my email to Steve earlier, maybe we just leave this, that the town manager shall present recommended funding sufficient to meet identified prioritized annual capital maintenance and additions. It gets in the maintenance. And then we separately discuss the value of coming up with some kind of a formula as a policy, in a, in a, in a policy review. And it's certainly, I, I think what advisory was trying to do was to talk about debt service roll-off, so that it just doesn't get spread out among the rest of the budget, and that we really are committed to maintaining a certain level of capital funding here.
I, I would agree with that, and, and it puts this idea in its proper place, which is a bigger discussion. There's a lot to, I don't fully even understand it, to be honest with you, and someone like Jack even couldn't, you know. So, but that's a big, important discussion, and let's put it where it can be had there. Because I did the town, and we would, everybody would benefit from it. But keeping the, the change you made, cause that gives him, that gives him much better direction, I would think. I understand that myself, in terms of what, for this year.
I mean, I think at some point, though, we have to have percentages or numbers.
Oh, that's a great discussion.
You know what I'm saying?
We should have that discussion.
You know, I was, I was at MMA today, we were talking about capital budget stuff, they're doing best practices for capital forecasting now. And they all said, look, you know, you need to come up with a, you know, a stabilized budget with a number in it, based on a percentage of your appropriated budget. That's gonna be what MMA recommends.
Something like a floor and a kind of ceiling.
Right, exactly.
A range, so that you've got, if it's a good year, you push more towards the ceiling, and how much you're gonna towards capital. In a bad year, you may say, well, the minimum we need to ensure for the next 10 years, to fund the following years, capital expenses or capital-
Outlay.
Outlay is, is done. So I think that's, this allows, you know, the formulation or formula or adoption of adequate funding, I think is reasonable, and then look at down the road, a fixed number for the floor of fixed orders, so. Well, keep in mind, that, that future policy discussion also has to integrate what is viewed and how it, how it is viewed by our ratings agency, alright? And it's, so fixed numbers are nice, but, you know, budgets tend to grow, and while the fixed number is worthwhile, ultimately, that number is derived by the need to replace existing capital to the extent that it needs to be replaced, as opposed to be eliminated because it's used less, or proved upon by something better. And as well, additions to capital. You know, an example of that is, you know, we never had a capital expense for streetlights. Now we do, now we do, okay? But the, the trade-off is that we're saving a fairly sizable operating cost, and that's a swap you'll take. Those are the types of things that, that don't fit neatly into fixed identified formulas. You're right, a, a ceiling and a, and a floor makes some sense, but we also have to think about how that's perceived by, by the ratings agencies, because frankly, that, you know, that's what we live by.
Yep.
If I may, I, I propose that before the end of the calendar year, we have this discussion once again, maybe in full, possibly to, you know, invite advisory, capital budget, and our finance team. And, you know, take it up then. In the meantime, I think we've got what's useful for the budget message.
So, so this, this budget message is basically the same budget message that has been on the OneDrive since early September. The only change we're recommending is this bullet, which now will read, town manager shall present recommended funding sufficient to meet identified prioritized annual capital maintenance and additions. So with that edit to the document that we've had, is there a motion to approve the budget message for FY20?
So move.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
And we will have a meeting, I, I personally would like to have a full financial policy meeting, and have this capital be a big piece of that. Because the last time we actually, we've made some tweaks, but the last time we actually went through that financial, it was called policy document, was quite some time ago, like three or four years ago.
We've been doing individual policies, but it's time for, we did need to freshen the main policy, and I think it's worth putting through them anyway.
Yep, so we will do that before the end of the calendar year, for sure. Okay, alright, moving right along. 10-year capital plan. We have guests?
We do.
Come on up.
Can I come up? Come on, join, join in. So you have these electronically, I believe, if you wanna just look at a hard copy of our sheet.
Yeah, it's on computers.
I'm gonna put it on the screen, too.
Yeah, put it on the screen, too. So this is the main. So for the last, last two months, we've been working on updates and, and building, meeting with departments multiple times, internally talking with financing. And we actually presented this first draft to the capital budget committee last, well, yesterday, no, last week, last week. And they were-
Don't hide.
And, and, and we had a very good reception. And as we wait for this to come up on the screen, let me just, just, so we, as we went through this, we, we said, there's a couple things that have to be, there's a couple of key things that I, A, we need to build our land and coastal infrastructure into the big discussions, cause those are important things. We don't know what the coastal infrastructure numbers will kinda be for sure, so there's, you know, an empty, empty line for the time being. But there will be numbers in there, there's numbers in the harbor master line, that includes the boat ramp and things of that sort that we know are coming. But there's gotta be, other things got to be plugged into there, so we know that. The land infrastructure is pretty much the, the round number that Brian Joyce has come up with for our annual road and drainage and, and, and updates, you know, with our roads and sidewalks. So we plugged that in here, too. And, and the, the exciting news is that when you, when you actually run through the whole thing, you, when you take, when you take the 10 years, and you look at the numbers, and again, we went through every year, and we made sure that there were actually real things in here. And that people are actually looking 10 years out, knowing that there's gonna be some things that'll pop up as time goes on. And then we, we took, and this is general maintenance, you know, big capital operating, it's not buildings, okay, it's not replacing a whole building or anything like that, except for one thing that I'll clarify about later, which is an enterprise that's still kinda up in the air. When, when we looked at this, there's one really big thing that's been built into this, and that's replacement of the school roofs or the boilers. The whole combined total of that is $8.2 million. And we think, when you add the three, that's the three school roofs and the three school boiler systems. They don't have to be replaced at the same exact time, but it's within a three to five year period. So we've been talking with Mike, Michael McMillan, who's the school business administrator, and Luis Dimas, and our, our team about, when that comes, it might, I mean, Michael's exploring whether or not, do we apply for those as a block, like all the boilers and all the roofs with the, to the MSBA, the state gives funding up to 40% on these things. So, he's exploring those things. But I think he points $2 million. If you take that out, understanding that that's a whole of the- But I think point two million dollars, if you take that out, understanding that that's a whole, kind of a discrete, very major thing, it's roughly twenty-five million dollars over ten years, which is two hundred and twenty million dollars in there. That's the average over the next ten years. Which is really not that much higher than we're actually, it's about two or three hundred thousand dollars more than we're, that we have dedicated in investments, uh, at this point. Because we're doing about two point two between our role, our debt service that's rolling down and, and money that's going into capital reserve on an, on an annualized basis. Not the extra money that we're getting at special town meeting. We also could dedicate a hundred and fifty thousand to roads alone, right, plus the money from, uh, for chapter ninety. So, there really is, um, a, a, a target that we can reach. Now, understanding that some of the years are gonna be bigger and some of the years are gonna be lower. Some projects go up and pay for over, so these are all, these are all items that for the most part, except for that three, the big, no, I just think, these could mostly be paid for over, you know, one to five years. We wouldn't have to go to long-term debt on any of this stuff. But some of them, you know, if you have a half a million dollar solvency, for example, you may have to pay for that over a couple of years. It makes sense to do that. I mean, it makes sense to pay for it for longer than three to five years. It really depends on what the financing looks like, where we are. And roads, we wanna pay for those in cash. Fire truck, you know, if we have a one point, you know, an eight hundred thousand dollar, you know, pumper truck or ladder truck, that may make sense to, to bond over some period of time. But a lot of this stuff is stuff that we can pay for, if not in cash, and then, you know, pretty quickly. And this is an achievable number. And, and again, this is, we've been, the first cut was last year. This is a much more detailed and, and enhanced look. So, um, it, it, I, I think it's, and again, so I have Michelle, Michelle Wery from, from our public works department, who's been the keeper of, of the process, the manager of the process. And it's a really, I think we have a, a, a real good look at what we're looking at, at the next, you know, five to ten year, well, ten years, but very detailed, next year and then the next five.
Do you mind if I just ask some clarifying questions? Because my computer is not opening up, so I can't see the different tabs, but.
We're going to open it up behind you, so you can look at it.
Yeah, but, but, no, we'll deep, that'll just send us way off unless somebody has specific questions about that. But you're saying the school roofs and the boilers are not built into this?
They're in, they're inbuilt into this, right now.
They are built into this.
They're into, built into this now, so that would, but if I take them, if I take them out, let's say point two million, we have a twenty-four point nine million dollar number over ten years. If you leave them in, it's thirty-three.
Okay.
Which is still not an unachievable number, by the way. Three point three million is not an unachievable number either. It's more than we're doing. It's about eight hundred, or nine hundred thousand, but it's not a, it's not a jet can, it's not like we're three million dollars in, in the hole or something.
Right. And, and so, this, this is our first pass of this, so we're not gonna deep dive into what all this represents? But, for example, like police and fire, those numbers would recommend the, the, the rolling in and out of the fleet?
Yeah.
And things like that.
So there's a, there's a, there's a vehicle maintenance replacement policy that was recently re-vetted with capital for police. There's one with fire. And there, really, functionally is one with public works, that we're, Jason is pulling them all together into more, into packages, so we have, you know, a schedule, we have the schedules and, and, and the, the backup all in one place on all of those.
Does it make sense to, to, to look at, look at this again with the enterprise funds being pulled out?
Well, the enterprise funds are pulled out, so if you look, the town total is three. The enterprise fund total in two thousand twenty is seven hundred and twenty-three, so the total is three point seven. So we do break the enterprise funds out as a separate line. But they're included, because people often, you know, it's still town money. It's coming out of your pocket, right? But it's still town money.
It's total debt service.
Yeah.
Right.
And, and even though it doesn't count against us necessarily the same sense, the debt load is still a debt load, right? You, you, you know, you still have to pay for it.
Right.
So I think it's also a very good thing to look at all of that as a, as a global look, too. It's the first time we've done that. Now, what this doesn't show here is alternative funding sources. So one of the things we've started to do, and if you wanna open up, um,
Fire.
Fire? Uh, we'll, we'll show an example. So if you look at fire, so, uh, in twenty twenty, so you can see what we've identified this far left are things that have grant funding possibilities. Doesn't mean they're guaranteed, but, you know, the ambulance, the engines, um, have the ability to be funded by grants. The computers are something we're trying to get done through the regional agency as opposed to just the town. And, um, and again, if you just scroll down a little bit, Tracy, um, you'll see this, you know, there's things that have the ability to be funded through FEMA grants and other things. Maya, again, Maya provides, um, our insurance, um, consortium, provides funding for certain types of items for police and fire as well. Again, we're not guaranteeing them, but it's, we wanna start identifying those upfront. Same thing with rec. You know, rec has the ability, so the form, which we're not showing here, there's six or seven or eight checkboxes of different funding sources. It could be free cash, it could be the rec department funds, it could be grants, um, it could be a state grant, it could be a trust fund. The library has money, for example, to buy books and things like that. It could be a gift fund, it could be money that's been given as a gift. It could, they, there may be, um, other financing sources to the state, like sewer and water have revolving funds for sewer and water upgrades. So for me, kind of try to identify this upfront as well, particularly with rec stuff and with CPC funding. So we say, well, yeah, for example, it's a, this surprise is coming up on rec. Well, can we look at, for alternatives to, to find ways to fund it? I think the schools, for example, next year, or, I said, maybe it's next year, we're looking at the replacement of the fields, the field turf. You know, that was done with a public, you know, a community, uh, government partnership. That's a lot of money. I mean, it's still, they're critical fields, they're used all the time. So the question is, are, are, we have a year to, or a year and a half now, I think about, are there ways of finding other funding to turn up?
So when you say next year, is that, you're, you're talking twenty twenty-one?
So, so if you go to twenty twenty, um,
In the schools?
Yeah, so if you go back to the main page, Tracy, um, so we, we, we've had meetings with all the departments. Again, I, I don't wanna say for, uh, that, that, you know, this is, this is what, this is what's gonna be presented, um, sorry, it's the other way, yeah.
Which one is it?
It's all the way, yeah, same.
This one?
So, um, so we sat, we sat with the schools, in fact, their number went up after we sat with them, but we, we actually worked some things out. There was something involving maintenance that we were able to build back into maintenance, um, uh, and what we're trying to do also, to make things simpler, is if something's a building replacement, a system replacement goes into facilities. And the facilities tab will, will show that, you know, boiler at the Deer House is a school project, or a town hall, or the senior center. So it's all in one place, the place is gonna manage the actual project. We're doing that with, um, IT as well. So we're trying to centralize IT. So it may be a school IT project, there may be a town IT project. If it's a physical, if it's not software purchase or something, it should go into the central IT budget. Um, so, the IT budget is a hundred and thirty-five, they're, they're asking for a hundred and thirty-five. That actually is just town stuff. The school stuff at the moment is still on the schools. We have, I, I wanna get their buy-in to, to move their school requests into, um, the central IT budget. Is that, I think it helps, makes it easier to track, too. We're buying IT, we're buying it for everybody. Now, it may support the schools, it may support the town, but it's still an IT budget. So this is a, you know, again, I, I won't speak for capital, but, uh, I, you know, I think Brian was, I think you were positive the other night.
I, I think the committee was extremely pleased by the progress and the effort that's been set forth on this. I mean, this is a, you know, an incredible amount of work that's reflected in all of these department by department forecasts and buildups. We're delighted to see the, the very first column being alternative sources of funding that starts to drive the mindset of thinking about going after grants wherever we can, which can really move the needle on this. It can be the difference between doing and not doing certain projects, so, um, all of this is, is fantastic. It is a first pass. We've only seen sort of the preview of the structure, just as you're seeing it tonight. We've not gone into, um, any of the detail of the numbers, but now that we have them, we can start that process and figure out how we make this work, um, including, you know, the, the funding sources and ultimately making sure that both the cash and, you know, any bonding plays well with the, uh, you know, the integrated financial budget going forward. So this is, this is a key tool in the world to take that next step.
Go ahead, Paul.
I think it would be very helpful for some of the larger items that show up, the boilers, the roofs, the engines, the pumpers, the fields. It may give us time to approach the state or any potential project funds that may be there for grants or for assistance, like in building funds with schools, which could potentially help on boilers, or particularly roofs, probably was more likely to be funded, um, through the building fund or state loan. But even the ambulance is the field, even boilers may have a capital bond that all the time the state will bond for these sorts of items. That may be a fifty-fifty match or a twenty-eighty match or something. And allows us time to pursue those.
So one of the things, I, I get calls annually from states, sorry, state senators, state reps, like, hey, do you have any capital projects you're looking to fund? Something about one-off. Because the, the bank administration, um, i- i- is, is key to helping support local development in that sense. They don't wanna fund people, they wanna fund things you can build or projects you can, you can do. So, for example, this last year, um, we've been looking to upgrade the animal control vehicle, uh, which is a shared town. We, we are the, we're the contributor of it. We, we talked, I talked to Senator, Representative Muschino, she was able to get a, a project in. It survived, so we're actually getting a tri-town animal control vehicle, upgraded, it's gonna be great. And we're gonna have it here, but it'll be shared by the three communities. So that's one of those one-offs that comes out. We just received a grant announcement last week, which Jack and I had were both at, Lieutenant Governor came to town for fifty thousand dollars for the school information database, uh, student database. Fifty thousand dollars towards a hundred thousand dollar project. We won another, um, eighty thousand for two other projects, two weeks before that. One of them is the IT master plan, which is also a year, and also for work on, on electronic data management and public portal to allow better Freedom of Information Act responses. So, you know, it, it's important to have this, so you can go actively search for them. So when, when they, when the grant applications came out, I'm like, I pulled people together and said, hey, what's on our list? What can we fund?
Right.
We, I did it with Pete, and, uh, when we were talking about, um, the complete, well, we're gonna be doing that with Complete Streets. So some of that, you know, there's gonna be projects that we're gonna be able to fund with Complete Streets money. And then we did it with, um, our, our Housing Choice, and we didn't unfortunately win the Housing Choice grant, but we know when we have this priority list, it's very, it's very easy to pull something off the list and just throw it in. And it's, it may not be shovel-ready, it may be shovel-ready, but it's actually funding-ready, because it's already, it's already in the mix. So this is incredibly helpful. And again, as Paul pointed out, it's also, there's a multi-year advanced planning for the mass school building administration. So we're already, we're already there, we're having those conversations now. Michael's digging in and getting the process laid out. So we may not apply for that money for a couple of years, um, but we're there, uh, we're, we're in the process for it, uh, which is, which is great. And again, so I think there's a lot of, so this year, if you look, the town total's three million dollars. It's a lot of money. There's actually, um, so there's alternative funding just in the road infrastructure, which is built in here, of three fifty. We got about two hundred thousand in road chapter ninety, we put a hundred and fifty in the year end. So that, that number now is down to two six five. Now, it's still a lot of money, but that's two six five, it's two point six five million as opposed to three. And I know there's other numbers in, there's other, the funding sources that have not been identified in this list. This is a spend, not a fund. So I think we can get that number down and maybe actually fund, we may probably fund a very large chunk of this, if not all of it. Particularly if we do some stretching out of some of the expenses.
Some good formulations.
Yeah, uh, so, but it's, but having this allows you to look and know that something's coming in three to five years, and you don't wanna, so you gotta balance those, those things out, so.
I think to Brian's point, too, about just being, having that column about identifying grants, because, you know, in my business and the nonprofit world, you know, it's like, oh, there's a grant fund. Oh, what can we put together to get a grant? Well, that's not how we should be operating. We should be operating in, what, what do we need? And then making sure we're, you know, ready and able to, to apply for grants when the opportunities present themselves.
And the work we've been able to do on IT the last three years has gotten us there, right? This is a tremendous foundation, and now we're like, okay, we need this, we need this, we need this. As a result, we, we, you know, we were able to apply, and we went back and forth, and we got the funding, you know, boom, it was like, it went in forty-eight hours. Because we were ready. And we've, we've also been now successful. So we've gotten it, we've spent it, we've done successful projects. They, once you're in a, once you're in a path of successful project development and, and, and response, you wanna get, the agencies wanna fund you, because you, they want you to succeed. That's, Lieutenant Governor didn't come to class and buy accident.
Right.
I'm sure she wasn't in the region, uh, but, uh, it was just successful, it was only four weeks before. At least she was everywhere, right?
That's not fair.
But, but she could, she could, she could, she could've gone to a lot of other committees, and she gave the class. This is the second time she's been here for things recently, and, um, you know, we won this award. And again, it wasn't a, it wasn't a one-off, I mean, we, we, we have a track record. And the fact that we've been able to, in the last three weeks, win a hundred and thirty thousand dollar total IT grants is a really, really big thing. We weren't spending a hundred and thirty thousand dollars on IT, you know, five years ago, so, uh, and, and this is stuff that's building the backbone. In fact, there was other people getting grants for things we've already done, which is, which is, it's, you know, we're, we're, when I looked at the community compact stuff, and it's all about best practices, uh, a lot of the stuff we've already done, which is great. And some of the stuff, like, there was a whole community at Complete Streets, so we're already in the program. So we don't need to go for best practice money for that, we can go for different part of money and then save this for others. So it's, it's a good start. Now, I, again, you'll be looking at, uh, we'll share all of the, the current year project requests, so you're all aware of what's, what's being asked for. And we're gonna rate this out the process.
Steve's next.
No, 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 I was, uh, you were, you were talking about backing into grants, and I just said, maybe we should look at Humvees.
Yeah, 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 oh, there you go.
No, apart from that, apart from that, this, uh, this is, this lays out replacement structure, right? And the possi, or if you will, the advance work on some larger projects, but doesn't get into the identification of those, uh, those very large projects, for instance, town hall.
We have to have that separately, but yes.
No, that's my point, is that this is effectively what you were asking for, so you could figure out, how does town hall fit with the rest of the picture? Right? So.
Right.
And what, what is in here, though, is there's money a few years out to, to, to look at a public safety, to study what it would be.
That's the point, that's the advance work, but there's, there, there's not a, there's not a funding identification in here for that. Which, I guess that's my point to the board members, that those are, those are one-off and very exclusive large items that would eventually go into the real way.
Yeah, just two impressions, because we, nobody would be down on, I mean, one is it popped up, did pop up quite a bit when we began the planning, and we had approved in nineteen, seven, seven hundred and sixteen thousand, and twenty, twenty, twenty's up to three million. So I just, uh, obviously, it seemed to be ending in twenty-one, four million, and that's quite a big increase for one.
There's things that are not in that approved column that actually were approved. No? Really? I thought we did more than that.
We did more than seven sixty.
Oh, it just, it just, I hope it's not just because we're doing the planning that this creates. I know it's not, so, anyway, you, I just, I just note that for, you know, it's, but maybe that's, it's good and it's listed in a systematic way, all this stuff. But I think more importantly is, is that this then speaks to a next area where we really bring this into focus, which is as we go through these years, and this fits into what we were talking about earlier, a formulation or how we're gonna decide what these priorities are gonna be, because we're not gonna be spending all of this money each year. I wouldn't think we're gonna have such an increase. But it also speaks very strongly to, we need to lay into this now, a financial plan, a long-term financial plan to finance this. So then, as we begin to put together a ten-year financing plan to do this, it brings it into a more of a focus. So it just, all I'm pointing out is, that seems to be the next piece that we need to do, is to address how this is gonna be financed over a ten-year period of time.
Um, yep, I wanna go through this, you can, you can speak in there, I wanna try to wrap up and segue into town hall.
So there's a, a couple of, uh, bonds that are out there now, currently, at the state level, there's an environmental bond, there's a capital bond. Both of them are long-term bonds, an environmental bond, I think it's seven years, and the capital, I think it's eight. These monies, for example, the environmental bond, it could be for efficiency in boilers, or it could be, uh, or efficiency of the roof, or solar panels on the roof, or, um, you know, um, ambulance that may have certain efficiencies. And in addition to it, the capital bond is the other one, which has monies available for municipalities for, uh, the usual structure of the capital, with the ambulances and, and cars and boilers and other things out there. So there's two, there's two government sources that could be match funds or available for the, for, for ready town.
We have the green communities funds that could be tapped for various things. We're gonna have the streets program that we looked at, that's a point a thousand dollars a year. The, um, the, um, green communities, about two fifty, that's a two fifty a year. And there's one, there's one-offs that come out of that, are we got our vehicles, because there was a special incentive to do electric charging stations, develop the electric infrastructure and, and electric vehicles. We have those leased vehicles, which are very successful in the first half, and our program. And there, and there are other funds like that, Paul, that are out there, and we get into these programs. In fact, we just looked at a sewer rate program. I don't know if we're gonna get it, but we applied, uh, so, uh.
So that's state money that would help reduce sewer rates?
Yeah, I, I don't know that, you know, again.
How about water, how about water?
And, and, and there's water and sewer, and I remember, from time to time, the feds will come out with money and, I mean, in fact, we're working on a big sewer, and we're looking at a regal sewer, we're doing a regal sewer analysis now. And, um, you know, at some point, the water plant is gonna have to, there's money to do an analysis of the water plant. It's gotta be some of those things, there always are. We're gonna probably look to something more regal on that, too. You know, we already provided water to hang them, uh, the landed ponds development, it's been on for a number of years. The town's water supply is very robust, which is great, uh, so, you know, we can help out our neighbors a little bit.
Those are the next committee updates I wanna have, is water and sewer, and we haven't had them in for a while, especially as we. Those are the next committee updates I wanna have, is water and sewer, and we haven't had them in for a while, especially as we start FY twenty, knowing their capital needs and everything. Jack, do you wanna say?
I just quickly, this is great, it's a huge improvement over what we had. I just wanna point out, it's really nice to have the requested budget, the historical data for requested plus approved. You know, in the past, we had to go dig up old town meeting warrants and actually pull the data off. It's really a waste of time. I just like to encourage us to keep doing this, so that we have a historical record of what's happened over the years. Does everybody understand what I'm saying?
Absolutely.
It brings a lot of clarity to what's going on, plus it also shows what projects have been slid into the outgoing years, and we don't have to go dig for that either, it's just right all there.
So one of those we're trying, and we're working to do this year as well, Jack, is to incorporate capital into the budget document.
Yeah.
So there'll be a capital section in the budget document.
Great.
Yeah, and those deep dives on the different towns are really, really good too.
So you all have this spreadsheet, so you can deep dive, you can take a look at, and you'll see, again, some of these things, you know, amended, I'm sure. But there are some things that are pressing, you know, like the fields have to get done, we don't want them to fade and fail. The tennis courts have to be addressed, and that's something on the pursuit route. And by the way, one of the big differences between last year and this year is six hundred thousand dollars in gold money, that was not listed last year. So that's a very large chunk of money, but it's important to show it, because it's, you know, the roads are a capital asset, you gotta maintain it, come on up the road. So this is the first, again, so good, capitals, capitals look at it, we'll go into advisory at some places too, when we're ready. And capital will be getting only grateful that we have this form, the form's been made electronic, thank you, Jason and Michelle are making everything electronic now, so departments can submit stuff electronically. So, and we have that database too, Jack, so it's all of that, it's that multi-page form we're about to fill out today.
We're only gonna get better at this, this, we are, thank you both, Michelle and Jason, for all of your hard work on this work. Steve, did you have a, what's the comment?
Oh, good.
So we're gonna segue into a discussion on the Town Hall infrastructure spec. Jason, what's your exact title?
Jason, what's your exact title?
I'm an engineer.
You're an engineer.
Engineer.
This is just the summary.
This is just the summary and the cost table that you guys got.
Chris, do you wanna tee up this conversation?
Sure. So Jason will get ready. The, so the board asked for ongoing analysis of the theme. So, we sat around, we talked internally, we can't do it by the end of the day. Some of the exam, some of the, you know, hanging, which is the ability to assumption home. And we have a screw-up committee, and some things have already been done in the kitchen for a few of the places. So we're not trying to squeeze out a budget, somebody just, the monitors, building, coming up the last, departments are cleaning us, or the bathrooms are gonna be stripped down. And we're also finding, you know, we pulled, we had to do some paint and a lot of, so. This room was repainted. This room was repainted, usually, because, you know, we got some tables from the scratch and dent. Tables from the scratch and dent. Jason, and we're gonna do a little bit more of that. Just a little more functional, you know, we replaced all the chairs here from years ago, it was a lot of big expenses. That said, we're not gonna be replacing the carpet. That said, that's at a very low level, there are much more fundamental issues. The building has pre, the storage structures, pre-world, pre-world, pre-world War II, someone asked what war? Pre-world War II. So it's not pre-world War I. So we're talking about wiring, a wiring system that's heating, and well, the plumbing, the heating. So, but we didn't have details on it. But we didn't have details on it. Jason was able to retain a company, so it was a second, a regular basis to get the mapping. We do top to bottom analysis, so they came in, they did this, they looked at it, it's a structure, for office and for office, which it is. And then also to, also for public procurement, wage almost. And they did a top to bottom analysis, and here's the numbers, and let me have Jason go in and look at that.
Yeah, and Jason, could you just, Jason, tell us who the contractor was that came in?
It's EBI, Environmental Business, I think, out of Burlington, Mass. Like Chris said, this is what they did, one of their proportions of what they do for living is evaluating buildings. It was done to the ASTM standard for building evaluations. The one caveat I would put on that is they didn't necessarily, analysis that they usually would look at, if you have a radiator, you replace it with a radiator. You're not gonna put a radiator anymore, you're gonna put in some other alternative form of HVAC. So they didn't go necessarily in kind of replacement, but a more appropriate replacement cost for the equipment in the building. So that's the only difference from the standard, from what they would've done, would be. But then they broke it down in good, fair, poor conditions of different components, so they went through both-site building, interior finishes, building systems, they had looked at life safety and other critical infrastructure. And then they came up with their costs for doing those. We then took those costs just due to the fact that timeline for any public project is not instantaneous, we can't authorize it. It's forward tomorrow, so we put an inflation factor, assuming that this would start, until theoretically, probably, a year from this spring. So that's, we added a five percent inflation per year onto the cost, on their construction cost. And then added in design and engineering costs, contingency, and relocation costs, if we were to shop Town Hall during construction.
So can you kinda summarize what the big nugget is, it's just a construction of five, five point four million dollars?
So that includes a full, working in the parking lot, paving, site amenities, all in the report, you know. Tonight, you're looking at significant repairs outside, building envelope, repairs to obviously, the paint and refinishing, placing all the windows, doors, roofing, and then coming in and doing interiors, replacing carpets, painting, and then all plumbing. In the historic building, needs to be redone, fixes to the plumbing associated with AD and compliance in the existing, in the refitting, addition. And then full HVAC replacement, I don't know if you saw the memo we got from facilities, but the air conditioner has failed. Probably is gonna be fairly difficult to replace, for this portion of Town Hall, this piece of equipment is out of. They don't even make the parts, so the question is what we're gonna do, we're gonna evaluate that before. Springtime, we do what we're gonna do on that, like, we can't survive something without air conditioning over here. But that's where we're at, everything's, most critical infrastructure is at its useful life expectancy. It's past, in the other building, it's pretty close to at, in this building, for all of the critical infrastructure.
And we're not gonna go through the whole report tonight, it is available.
So I have a post-it, we'll get our post-it, we'll have it, it's on the website. And I, we candidly set up on November first, we set up on November first, we had a committee of committees, everyone, we made a talk through this, and a few of us, and talking about potential next steps.
But did they, this is more for, is it more for public information? Did they prioritize, like, are there things that, like, are there laws that, like, you must do this?
Well, we've talked about that internally, at some point, if you're gonna do X, you have to do Y, and if you're gonna do Y, then you're gonna be tearing walls up in here, the walls just do HVAC. They said, yes, we need fire sprinklers in historic Town Hall and HVAC upgrades. You're gonna tear up the walls, do HVAC upgrades, then are you not gonna do the plumbing, and you pull off? And prioritize that by five years, and then tear the walls up again. So we just basically said, if you're gonna assume that, then if there's something you could delay, like carpets, but again, if you're gonna relocate everybody else, you're gonna just do it all at once.
The electrical system is, I think, is single.
In, in those sprinklers, like safety.
So the electrical system.
Not been too wired.
And we have to, into replacing, you gotta put up more. So if you're gonna do that, we talked about, actually, Jason gave a five-year, stretched over five years, and I said, well, can you really work in here? The electric is, the plumbing is, and then it's like, well, and again, I have a distinction of working, and I have a distinction of what building's right there. In a building that was being, the upper floor and the lower floor were that, and we were, the church was working around.
That was the home builders, and they were trying to.
Very bad, very bad. Eventually, they moved us all out, and they fired us, and they got it done, but, no, no, definitely not. So, so it makes more sense, really does make more sense, because if you're gonna open up a wall, it's, this was just, bathroom's a big one thing.
Or just one specific discipline, nothing else needs to be done for the next ten years, you say, okay, well, we can do some minor issues, fix electrical in that portion, if we didn't have to do the HVAC, like, critical pathways, HVAC, electrical, there's some plumbing issues over in the historic Town Hall, and life safety. So if you're gonna do all that, then at that point, you're kinda in for dying in per dollar.
So, go ahead.
So, I did read the report, it's great, thank you very much. There are scope of work issues that I have, I don't think tonight's the place to do it. Has capital budget and advisory got a copy of this?
Yeah, they will.
You know, I just, I think we should do a deep dive on the scope of work and look at what's been proposed. I don't think it should be a committee of committees where that gets done, I think it should be a little more, you know, open meeting for everybody. But I think, you know, like, capital budget and advisory, there should be an opportunity for us to really spend a lot of time, you know, going back and forth, and getting some questions answered, and then, then maybe after that, we go to a committee of committee, when everybody hashed out the details. I'm just thinking that if you do a committee of committee, and nobody's willing to look at stuff yet, Diane, we could have a huge.
We could have a huge.
Yeah, so we'll, yeah, so we'll.
We, we'll talk about it, about the process, but I have to remember first.
I think we should, but I think if we could get.
This could be, this could be, this could be, everybody knows.
I just, I, I, committee of committees.
I, I don't mean, I meant, I have an open meeting where everyone.
A public discussion where we.
I, I, I just.
I think, I, I, I might pitch to say, it might be worth having that discussion in a closed meeting, not closed, but in more confined meetings.
A public meeting, but a smaller, as opposed to a community forum.
Yes, we're, period can be fired, hours of course. Able to answer, able to answer, out of left field.
Well, our goal from the beginning, from last May, when we knew we had to move on Town Hall in some direction, was to get the study, you know, as we charged, get the study done, and then kind of choreograph the discussion to the next step.
And this is, this is a great first step, don't hear this, this is great, this is, you know, we've never done, and I just wanna make sure that the rocket scientists and advisory and capital budget, they get a chance to deep dive on the details.
Everybody, we'll circulate everybody tomorrow.
And then we'll start teaming up, choreographing the next steps we go forward. And I mean, I think with this study, which was some of the missing ingredients from last year's discussion, and then the capital, the long-range capital plan, just really owning what we have in front of us. You know, I think we have all the ingredients now to make a successful plan.
Well, I think, this is not, well, the buildings are old, we have to move on to this, these are the identified problems and situations that must be addressed. And if they're not, they're gonna fail, like, you know, we were very lucky, the atrax didn't stay in light, but, you know, literally, we're lucky to fail. But it's gonna happen, we don't have an atrax. Well, we can turn that on, so we, so Mark, his credit, Mark Kelly has had eight windows in a reserve, so we keep the building open, but it's summer. But we can't, but we can't, and it doesn't work, and we know the old building already has, it has what it needs. Not that it was effective, but they worked better than that, this building has, we have to put those windows, I mean, we have to do those windows. That doesn't really cool, that cooled when it was seventy degrees out, I don't know how long it's gonna work.
No, we all agree that we gotta do something.
We did spring it. We did, we did spring it.
So, the thing is, that there are, there really is time, and I think it would be best to address something, like, before they do crisis.
We're with you. This is fast track now, unless something on the board wants to say something that I'd like to work on in the agenda, because we have some special guests tonight. Thanks, Jason, for everything.
Thank you. So we'll get this, we'll get this posted up tomorrow.
Great, and then stay tuned. So we have two committee updates today, St. Harbor today, and Open Space and Recreation, so if anybody's here from St. Harbor, I'll have you come up, and then I'm gonna ask that you introduce yourselves, when you sit down, and feel free to move the chair up.
Feel free to drag it up.
Yeah, that's great. That's right. How's Cedar Acres doing?
The street is paved.
The street is paved.
We have no water.
You want everything?
I know.
I know.
Beautiful, beautiful. We want it even with the dirt road.
That's right, progress, that's great. Would you all introduce yourselves?
Would you all introduce yourselves?
I'm Chris Murphy, I'm the chair.
I'm Chris Murphy, I'm the chair.
I'm Logan Syle, I'm a youth ambassador.
I'm Nicole Garrity, program director.
I'm Evelyn Dickey, also youth ambassador.
I'm Peter Baskett, I'm treasurer of SEC.
Welcome.
Thank you. So, tonight we just wanted to give an update of what we've been up to since the DFC funding. And for those who aren't familiar, the DFC was the drug-free communities grant that we're given from SAMPA. So for the next five years, every year will be given a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. So that was September two thousand seventeen, year one went until September thirtieth, and now we're in year two, we were awarded year twos. And I haven't really presented what we've been up to, so this is a nice to update of trying to be a choice meet. But we also have our youth ambassadors here who will give an update on what they've been up to. So you can go right ahead. So, I always like to do a quick reminder why we're here, why we have a community coalition, annual asset. The vision is always to have a healthy substance-free environment here at Co-asset, of course, and our mission is to foster a strong and inclusive community that encourages healthy, educated, responsible choices about drugs and alcohol use, with the goal of, you know, reducing that amount of substances amongst our twelve seventeen-year-olds, and hoping to prevent that addiction and adulthood overall. And here's our drug-free community, so I mention this, because a lot of people play at St. Harbor, and they think of Christine Murphy, or Nicole Garrity, or Chris Picoller, who's our project coordinator, just individuals, or Peter, who's on the steering committee. It's a great reminder that our coalition is everyone here in the community. One for all the different perspectives, two for all the different resources, and three, to really reach that goal. So if it were just myself or Christine or one individual, we would be doing absolutely nothing here at Co-asset, or surrounding communities that have this funding. So we, Chris, senior on our coalition, you, putting in spot, also, we have everyone here, all twelve sectors on our coalition. We meet at least every other month to move forward with our progress. So, we've been fully staffed since February two thousand eighteen, not that long, just a few months, there's myself, great picture. I'm the one full-time, one full-time staff member, and then we have our part-time staff member, Chris Picoller, who's our project coordinator, who's also getting his masters for May of nineteen. So this is where we aim to be the ideal coalition structure. Many communities who have the DFC funding are still striving to have this structure. We are fortunate enough here at Co-asset to be on that way, so we do have an executive steering committee who makes the overall funding decisions, and decisions on programs moving forward, but the overall arching coalition are our sector representatives and our. But the overall arching coalition are our sector representatives and our volunteers. Uh, myself and Christopher Collarin are just resources. We're there, um, to give any type of resource that we can, whether it's contacting someone, but we are not the coalition. Um, it is run solely by our sectors and our volunteers. And then we have subcommittees. Um, we have a data subcommittee, run by two people right now, two volunteers, um, Sarah Littimore and Cam Serkaren. Bailey from Quon, or from Second. Thanking Congregational St. Serkaren. Um, and we also have our youth task force, that's our youth ambassador program, but we don't have those two really important, uh, work groups, it's our parent work group and our task force for substance specifics. Um, so we're always looking for volunteers, for board members, committee members, who are really, um, passionate about making some positive progress here in Cohasset. So if they are interested, they can contact me in the next one. So here, you'll just see briefly, this is what we have in place, we have our seven steering committee members, it's really small, but I can always, um, email that out to anyone who's interested. The side is our staff, and then our twelve sector representatives and our subcommittees, which I have already mentioned. Uh, really quick, our twelve sectors are Cohasset Public Schools, Cohasset Police Department, um, second congregation church, our local state government, who we always have joined, you know, at every single coalition meeting and every event in the school. Um, we have our youth, our parents, um, business, you see it all, if they're not gonna go through it. Um, Cohasset Rec has been phenomenal with giving us space for any event, training, um, in our ground level coffee bill getting to. So what have we been up to since February? We provided trainings here locally, um, and trainings across the country. Um, it's been a long couple of months, so we, either myself or Christopher Collarin attended the Positive Youth Development Training, which, um, went over, you know, positive social norming and how to engage youth. The CSCR Project-Based Learning Summit, which I think a few of you attended, which was phenomenal. Um, it really was a great networking opportunity as well for, you know, myself and Christopher Collarin are not Cohasset residents, um, and we're new into the position, so they put faces of names, was ideal. Um, and there were a lot of key stakeholders at that training, um, that had awesome ideas for this community. Um, Dover Youth to Use Curriculum Training, it's a four-day training in Dover that I attended, um, and really set that framework for our youth ambassador program, which we're going to. And then the Catta-Ca National Coalition Academy, which was in Santa Fe, April, June, and September. So we had traveled to Santa Fe three times. Um, the, so this is everything that we've done so far. We sat on the Town Marijuana Forum and, um, helped, you know, ban that recreational marijuana here in Cohasset, which was a huge step. Um, Health and Rec Fair, we, we have table there every year, we held a community vape presentation. We also gave, um, Ron Ford and Tor- Tor Sweeney our, um, vape curriculum. And they also put posters along, um, the middle of high school. Um, we had Chris Herron come, and we have our monthly ground level cafe. So, um, the second Friday of every month, we have ground level cafe at the teen center. Um, the first one of this year was September, and we had over eighty kids, which was huge. I even showed up and was like, what is going on? It was awesome, um, our last one was October twelfth, and there was about fifty kids, which is still a huge number, so, yeah. Um, we had our sticker shop in July, this is our first one here in Cohasset, and it was at Curtis Liquors. Morgan will speak a little more on that. Next slide, um, we had Christine, who was awarded the U.S. Army Award by, um, the state, she was at the State House, for all the work that she's done, um, since safe harbor was put in place in two thousand fourteen. Um, we partnered with Cohasset Rec, so we, um, presented twice this summer to the youth. Chris Collarin and I, um, were chaperones on some of those trips, which was interesting, helped in the face with a dodgeball. Um, and that's really, that goes to show that we are here, obviously, to make the community better, and we are always looking for volunteers to help us, but we are always looking to give back as well, so it's partnership. We, you give, we give. And we had an impact, short-term, and inter. We had our first international overdose awareness video, um, here in the commons, and there was good turnout. Cohasset hasn't had one, except for your fundraiser.
Yeah.
So this was the first inaugural one, and we hope to have it every year. Our recovery month, we partnered with the library and had our, um, art display, hopefully you saw it in September. And we had Maureen Caban come for our author talk, which was amazing. We had a QPR training, which is question, persuade and refer, um, and this is suicide, um, prevention training. So it's how to identify signs of suicide ideation, um, and how to, basically, it's like CPR where you have someone who's in a critical state, how can you sustain them until medical professionals intervene? So this is the exact same thing, how can you get someone who is in a critical state, um, sustain them until you get them to a medical professional?
It was very good turnout in the tree.
Great turnout, a lot of parent, a lot of, um, PSO there, CES, um, and it's free, we hope to have that again. We have Screenagers, where we had about a hundred and fifty people from Cohasset, parents and students coming. Watch Screenagers, which is a documentary on social media and, um, mental health. Out of the Darkness Walk for Suicide, Awareness Week, we had a team that walked down the teeth. Um, Dr. Elizabeth Engler came to speak again on the social media and mental health aspect. Um, and then we also presented to the freshman wellness class. So, in September, we started the youth ambassador program, which is our biggest accomplishment, so I'm gonna let you pick a role.
I'm sure you wonder what you're doing.
I don't really, I'm.
I forget.
It's if I dodge balls.
Yeah, yeah. So again, my name's Morgan Syle, I am one of the youth leaders in the ambassador's program. And I got involved in this program through a sticker shop that was done at Curtis Liquors, uh, over the summer. I did it with Christine Murphy, and we put stickers on beer cases so that people be aware of the consequences of buying alcohol for minors. And we're doing another one of those on November nineteenth. But I really joined this program, not only because of the opportunities it can offer me, but then what I can then turn around and do for my community and my peers, so that they're aware of the issues and the consequences of substance abuse, as well as giving my peers the confidence and the knowledge, um, putting their voices out there, so that they can make a statement. Um, a last, an example of that is last week, we developed and recorded our own PSA with the local WAT radio station. And it was on Drug Take Back Day, which is every April and October, uh, in Cohasset. And it was informing people and encouraging people to take their, um, prescription medicines that they're not using to the Cohasset Police Department, so they can be properly disposed of. And with, so they're not left in the medicine cabinets of your own home, which can lead to prescription medicine use and even overdose. Um, and I, again, I'm Evelyn Dickey, and I'm a freshman at Cohasset. And Nicole actually presented on my long class earlier this month, and she described, like, the bigger opportunities and public speaking opportunities like this, and I decided to get involved. And actually, just yesterday, we did a cleanup for about forty-five minutes to an hour around the village, and we walked two streets and found many cigarettes, Juul pods, beer cans, nips, and solo cups around the town. And I was actually very shocked at the amount of cigarettes and such a short amount of time that we got. And we're gonna bring the evidence, it was about two and a half pounds of substance-free as litter, but we spared you the, you spelled cigarettes. Now my office. Um, and in the future, I'm very excited about, um, educating the younger grades of Deer Hill on social emotional role-being, awareness, mental health, and good decisions. And then, uh, there's also a peer leadership conference in Gillette Stadium, uh, November twentieth, where Norfolk County Schools, um, learn leadership skills and communicate about future projects that we can go on. And there's a, um, presentation with a speaker. And also, every month, one safe harbor youth ambassador is featured in the Life on the Rock magazine, highlighting the work they've done and, uh, what else they do with the community. And I'm just very excited, I'm just, your projects we're gonna be doing with safe harbor.
I'm just very excited about a few trips with, uh, younger people, like, yeah, so much. Can you just, somebody just describe, so that people can hear about the drug takeback on Saturday?
Yeah, yeah, so that's coming soon, I'll go through these very quickly, um. I'll talk about this first, so really quick, um, partnering with Stop and Shop, we're gonna be giving out free safe harbor totes on Friday, this Friday, at three thirty until the totes run out, because of the, uh, plastic bag ban. So we're, we're trying to help the community there, and we will also be promoting Drug Take Back Day. So Saturday, October twenty-seventh is coming Saturday, great?
Yeah.
Yes.
Um, ten to two at Cohasset Police Department, so that's where you can bring your unused, um, expired medications, instead of leaving it in your medicine cabinet, have it, um, properly disposed of. And then, we will have guiding good choices, if you want more information on that, I will give that out. We have three parents that will be trained in that. Um, November fourteenth, we have invited, um, specific volunteers for our appreciation luncheon. We'll be recognizing two volunteers, um, for all their work that they've been doing and work providing free lunch. Um, Power Prevention Conference, November eighteenth, we're partnering with Situate Fact, so register now, because seats are filling up, um, and free t-shirts to any volunteers, and that's just, you know, helping register, set up. And lastly, the peer leadership conference that we have, um, November twentieth for nine to four.
And we really are looking for volunteers, so far we've put out the ask, and, but honestly, everyone that's responded has been in the Situates, so it's a little bit embarrassing, we'd love to get some Cohasset volunteers that are gonna help, that are gonna sustain this too.
And for anyone who's interested, last month, it, no, December eleventh at nine thirty a.m. is our open call at three a.m., at one forty-three P. C. So I try to keep it short and sweet.
There was so much to say.
Yeah, yeah, we've been, these ambassadors, we have, uh, about eight others.
This is a dream come true for me to get the youth involved, and have someone.
So, God, so, so I had the opportunity to tour the Situate's drop-in center last week. You know, I, I would like to propose that we think about doing something like that in Cohasset, it's wildly successful. It's a, it's a physical presence, it's there twenty-four seven, they're doing lots of youth program in there, they're doing things like meditation and acupuncture, so they're going after root cause type behaviors. It's, I, I'm, I was blown away by what they're up to, and, you know, we have the garage over in the parking lot that's really not used all that much, it's used for, you know, uh, um, middle school dances. Can we start talking about maybe, you know, doing something that's similar to Situate? I mean, Situate can't keep, they have, I mean, they got people coming out the doors that it's so blocky.
You know, that, that has been a walking progress now for about seven years.
Yeah.
These fundraisers, um, it was done not as part of the Situate Fact, but as an offshoot of another organization John Kim has started, and they literally just had a fundraiser where they raised hundreds of thousands. Um, so it's not an inexpensive thing to do, and it's quite a big process, and it's clearly something, if there was a group of people that wanted to get going, we could help guide that, but, um, right now, ours is involved, we're involved in prevention, it's our, our, the, our grant is for preventing twelve or seventeen-year-olds to substance abuse.
But from what I understand, there's a very close relationship between Situate Fact and the folks that are doing the drugs.
And that would be a perfect, that would be opportunity for that short-term action group, you know, that'd be a substance-specific group where we would love to have.
Because fact is great, but, you know, you have to wait till you set up an event for people to show up.
Yep.
Apparently, they're getting people's walk-ins that are having, you know, I mean, it's really been really, really effective from what.
We've been, we've been involved since the setup, and we were there when it opened up, and we've been to a bunch of things. I mean, we totally agree, but there are a lot of people from Cohasset that are going.
I know, and, so, you know, I, I kind of know what's going on there, and I think there are people in Cohasset that would put the time and effort into, you know, doing something like this.
That would be great.
And that building just doesn't get used, and, you know, I can't tell you it's okay.
I mean, we would be thrilled to be partners on that, the thing that's taking the lead on something like that would be taking away from the, the grant. But we, you know, the steering committee could be partners with a bunch of active people that want to do that.
You can really get your, you can really get your specific, you know, adult groups on, maybe that's something, maybe that's something.
This is for kids, I mean, a lot of what they're doing, a lot of what they're.
Yeah, ours, our grant is for younger kids twelve, seventeen, and so that outside of that would require, you know, more money, different manpower, because they couldn't do it.
And I think adults are, it wouldn't be allowed.
Yeah. No, but I, 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 I know, that has been, that is coming, it's terrific, um, well-used, great stuff, and great people backing. They have a lot of, um, money from a lot of corporations that are backing this.
Relatively good news, numbers, if followed through the end of the year, the total of deaths in matches. That's the first year in, we're one of the few states that's, part of this is introduction, intervention, invention, and.
Not true.
So a lot of, so a lot of, beginning to see the, more, total number of overdoses.
And you were very beneficial in getting that, that in our can and working the whole program, so, you know, you to thank for a lot of that, you to thank for a lot of.
Takes the village, takes the village.
It's coming a little crazy.
Kids, I'm sure.
The school, quite honestly, is all over that right now, and, um, we've been, we've been working with them.
Yeah, it says you had to start a nicotine, you had to start a nicotineation group for the school.
Because the kids have, now, can't get off the vape.
So I might, um, I've heard a lot about the vaping at our school, and I hear it around a lot, just like, fortunately, and like, people, like, the pastors use them. And I think a lot of, I'm taking health class right now, so I think a lot of the presentations we have and talk are really helping. Like the vaping project, uh, presentation that Safe Harbor Coalition submitted. I think that's really informing, not only me, but all the class, and that's, I think it'll make a difference. But also, I just, me and the garage, that's like a little, they're there.
Yeah.
Me, me and my other, my other partner, Kira Johnson, um, we're actually planning, we're looking at plans to make that into, like, a homework center for high schoolers, so they have, like, a safe place to go hang out with their friends, do homework, and just like, uh, be together. So, it's not really, like, team, like, teachers, looking over your shoulder, like, you want a library that closes at three, so we get, like, no work done. So, that helps.
Oh, right.
Yeah, it's cool, I agree. The church is beautiful, by the way, but, yes, that's something that they have proposed as an active project.
That's great, that's great, well, that socialization's.
Well, that socialization at every level.
Alternative, alternative activities.
Socialization, but safer, much safer.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Wonderful, wonderful. Peter, I imagine you're gonna say.
Peter, you want some of this? Do you want copies of these?
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's a, it's anyways, but.
So, um, we're gonna now have a presentation from Open Space and Recreation Committee.
I have members of the committee here tonight. I also have my field's Thomas, coordinator.
Yeah, I hope everybody can introduce themselves. Whenever you're ready, I'd be glad to.
Yeah, everybody's got the copy. Uh, we have it up on the board. What we're, what I want to accomplish tonight is to bring you up to speed on what we've been doing for the last year. Uh, we're at the point where we're ready to submit to the state. We're ninety-eight percent there. And I'll explain the type of interaction I need to address the last two percent. Make the submission to the state and the schedule. Okay, first of all, let's just go through the process. The committee was appointed in spring of two thousand seventeen. And we started off by reviewing the prior year OSRP, which started in two thousand nine. And had been in effect until June, June first of two thousand and seventeen. This effort was not a complete rewrite of the Open Space and Recreation Plan. It was an update of all the critical information. It wasn't a complete stop at zero, it was redo. It was an update. So it has some limitations. So first off, we started to interact with other town boards and other organizations in the, in the community that are involved in conservation and recreation. Uh, we conducted a comprehensive community forum early, late in the spring of two thousand seventeen. We advertised it on social media, on social newspaper. You know, had flyers out, you know, put it around everywhere we could. Uh, we didn't get a great turnout, but we did get some folks to come. And we had a presentation at the rec center, a big room downstairs. We got some information about what people were thinking about for additional recreational opportunities or other open space possibilities. The second major project that we, part of the update is an opinion survey. Again, we did this through the summer of two thousand seventeen. We had a comprehensive opinion survey. That was online. We had a link available on our website, on social media. We had it in hot copy at the C D Center, the Library Town Hall. And we, we campaigned the survey for about forty-five days. We had about sixty-eight responses. And again, it was similar information that we tried to collect with the, the community survey. A lot of, you know, it was fifty questions, you know, how often do you use the, you know, the open space? How much you're paying, what you're putting in your group, things like that. And basically, it came down to, we need, we want more access to the harbor. We'd like to have more bike paths and more walking paths. That was the synopsis of that. We conducted, well, we conducted the citizen life forum. And then the major partners developed goals for this update and action items to complete those goals. Uh, these are the tributing boards, private groups. You could see, you know, almost everybody, we interfaced with all of the groups that touched recreational space in any way we could think of. Also, we accessed databases, data availability, state, state action, child statistics, various habitat information that the state conducts.
No Boy Scouts?
No Boy Scouts? We have, yeah, we have them queued up as our, uh, one of the volunteer groups that were, like, we know, we have a lot of days done. Yeah, but no, we didn't, we didn't, uh, I guess that was probably all the same. What we came down to at the end of all of our efforts are these four overarching goals, okay? Let's make protection of open space and the character of the town a priority in all land use decisions. And there's a bunch of action items under that that we'd like to accomplish. The most important of which is that when open space owned by the town is up for discussion about transfer for whatever reason to an alternative use. We would like to have the board of selectmen, have us, the Open Space Committee, render an opinion on how that affects the habitat or whatever the, you know, whatever the natural elements are of the open space that might be transferred. Now, we don't have any jurisdiction to, you know, get in the way of anything. It's just an advisory. So that we have a chance to represent the town in this aspect of a transfer of public land. Okay? Because habitats are habitats. So once, once they're gone, they're gone. You know, species that use that, you know, maybe even public, you know, walking area that, you know, we're not really that familiar about. There's a lot of trails in the town that aren't really recognized, you know. Old, very old trails that still, some people use, you know, to move from one place to another. So that's the primary, that's one of the big action items under the first goal. Protect and maintain the natural environment. We've done a lot of work on identifying at-risk habitats and species in the, uh, the open spaces that we, you know, we have in the town. And we've got, you know, really blessed with beautiful and abundant open space. And, you know, a lot of the surveys and all the work we've done, people really wanna keep it that. You know, they like, they like having the woods close by and the beaches and all the rest of it, the marshes, all of that. So we're, we, in the action items, we pretty much, you know, really take the role of the shepherd of the open space to, you know, maybe, we talked about this, how the cleanup by Safe Harbor on Saturday, there was a cleanup by the Chamber of Commerce. So one of the goals is to organize an earth day, organize a spring cleanup, organize a fall cleanup. And have, you know, really use the committee to coordinate with all of these groups and have a big one, you know, t-shirts and lunch and the whole thing. So that's, that's one of the big things we want to do with that. Improve recreational opportunity and access, you know, you were just talking with the Capitol Committee about improving the tennis courts. Other recreational opportunities. We support that a hundred percent and, you know, anything we can do to identify and work with all the committees involved to create any other recreational opportunity that might come along. I don't know what that is exactly, you know.
There's an initiative to create a town-wide trail, digital trail-wide map for the town in the next couple of years. And that project is beginning next month relating to the project-based summit that occurred, that Nicole mentioned. That was also, open space was represented there. It was a phenomenal summit in making networks and, um, and so from that, um, the networks made there. There, I think there was gonna be new town projects working with the schools, the Jack Black League to, to make projects like the Trail Map.
I apologize. Nobody identified yourselves. Why don't we just take a break?
I'm Stacy Manhattan. I'm with Bill's Thomas helping to coordinate and prepare the document.
I'm Peter Baskettori. I'm chair.
I'm Katie Holden.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. In organizational changes and collaborations and whatever, and one of the things is just to have the committee be a standing committee. The, uh, the prior committee submitted the plan, got it approved, had one meeting and had ten pages of action items and just dissolved. Never did anything. You know, we've got, um, something, or we've accomplished. Continue to meet regularly once a month probably and work on all of these things. And we want to act more selectively periodically on, you know, what we've been doing and what we see and, you know, that's needed. So Chris and I have talked about this. This won't, this is a budget to accomplish that list of action items. We can't get there without some funding. And as I, as we discussed, the funding will be embedded in various other departments. Okay? And the, the only thing, you know, we need to do is get it included in a budgeting for this coming year. Which is fiscal twenty nineteen, twenty. So the years are just year one, two, three, four. So it'll be fiscal twenty. And we're looking for eighty-seven hundred dollars. Trail maps, that's pot digital, pot actually producing trail maps to drill holders at the, at the various town-owned open space parks, okay? Trail markers, in Wheelwright at least, you know, there are several trails. People get lost in there. And we wanna mark the trails and actually we'll have a naming of the trails. Yeah, we'll, we'll get some suggestions on naming the trails and produce markers. We're gonna put trash barrel up in Wheelwright. Because that's where the dogs are fond of leaving their mark. Um, and some trash barrel liners, that's an ongoing thing. Earth date promotion, I mentioned that before. Some t-shirts and lunch, you know, whatever. You know, maybe twelve hundred bucks, seventeen hundred bucks, something like that. Uh, the big thing is a rare species survey. Katie can talk to that.
So currently, um, I think there are six rare species in Cohasset. And whether that's because no one's ever really looked for them, there's a lot of unknown, I don't, I'm not aware of any, you know, wildlife studies at all that's ever been really done comprehensively or individually for rare species. Um, there's one plant species that was confirmed two thousand thirteen. And then there's a few insects that were confirmed two thousand two. Um, and there is potential a box turtle. You know, pretty soon, if they aren't looked for again, they, we won't send out any technical rare species in town. And I, I think that, uh, it would be useful for a couple of different reasons. Ones, I think, figuring out how, what is, if there's anything special, if Cohasset's special in town. That especially, like, I saw spotted turtle. It's, it's not technically rare, but it could be soon. And if there was study on a box turtle or, you know, is the habitat protected, is it not, is it being managed for that species? And I think that's also something that could eventually break out into, you know, a project with the schools. That's very popular now in fourth, fifth grade, you know, head-starting turtles, you know, bringing the, you know, school curriculum out actually into the town, local resources. And so I think it has potential and I think it's important to, as far as understanding priorities for land protection, um, just having some kind of a baseline.
And in the, in the current, in the prior plan, there was mention of several rare, rare plant species. They were from, I think, nineteen eighty-six was the last time they were seen. And, you know, there were, there was a half dozen that were, you know, very rare and they were still around. We gotta find out if there's anything still around. We're losing habitat every day. I think it's critical to understand what's out there to give a greater sense of what we should be protecting. Seasonally, we'd like to put out a communication and I guess the suggestion we gave that it would be a page in the recreation flyers that go out or an addendum to the recreation flyers or something, but we'd have to produce the graphics and get the information together. You know, put the, put the pages out in the comments. We could probably piggyback on the recreation publications to put that in. But seasonally to alert, you know, or at least communicate to the public what's going on in the open space. You know, the Recreation Commission will take care of the recreation side. We're gonna buy on that. And we do have a member from the Recreation Commission, Jeff Hopwell. So he's, he's interacting, he's on committee and, you know, he keeps us up to date. But once, you know, once in the spring, once in the fall, like, we just went through mushroom season. Many people walk in the woods, but there are a bunch of every color mushroom, size of mushroom you can imagine. You know, from mid-September to mid-October, the woods are full. And we'd like to, you know, tell people, you know, gee, don't eat this one, eat that one, this one, you know, enjoy the ride. You know, you'd see all of, all the different fauna that comes out. And the changing in the woods, you know, you know, how the woods change in the spring and in the fall. And recreational opportunities as well. And other things that are, you know, going along with the water, you know, water resources and, you know, whatever happens to be going on. And we've got, you know, people who are involved, the conservation people who are involved in the water resources. So we've got broad committee of line now. And we've got very good, spread people that are interested in this endeavor. And day later, we need to hire, you know, high school kids for four hours a week to pick up, you know, the trash bags, refill the trash bags, pick up the outage, things like that. And help with trying to restore the water gardens that are all overgrown in town. There's a large number of them, like forty-something, water gardens that essentially have been abandoned. We'd like, you know, they were put in and they just fell apart, nobody made any. So, you know, we'd like to get twenty-five hundred bucks put aside so we can have four hours a week, twelve bucks an hour for, you know, high school kid job to help us to, you know, along with other volunteers to try to maintain the stuff. And then miscellaneous supplies. And it goes out, you know, pretty much the same every year, except for the second year, uh, for the survey. So that's the how, how we achieve the goals and how we make a contribution to the town as a standing team.
So can you just go through the actual board, 'cause I do have some questions about some of the mechanics of, so you just recommend it. But, um, just in terms of what's next. Yeah.
And what the endums, what's the endums as well?
That's fine, but what's the process for getting it approved? Sure. So, um, so we're really, we're wrapping up the draft document. Um, it's almost two hundred pages with all the attachments, but the next steps are essentially, um, upon town approval, submit to CCS ideally in early.
Let's stop right there. Town approval. All those boards that I showed you contributed to the process. I need Chris to put out a note to all the boards and, you know, give the priority of the board, the waters or planning, all the people who contribute. And they need to recommend adoption of their pot. And they need to recommend adoption of their pots in the, in the plan, okay?
But we're not involved in that.
Did you make a, you know, you didn't make a contribution? Yeah, but you can look at the overall, and, you know, and look at their comments.
But each of, like, the sit chapters need to get signed off on by the board?
Yeah, and they contributed, we took what they gave us, pretty much verbatim, and it's in the, it's in the, in the plan.
And you need that signed off in order to submit it?
Yes.
So, and I think, I can coordinate with Peter, there's kind of a checklist that we definitely need for that. And typically we submit, I think, to DCS with the letters from those letters saying we recommend it.
We approve what we put in.
Yeah, so my only concern is, that seems to be very timely, because some of these boards might only meet once a month, and if they have to sign off on it.
Right, yeah.
So I make sure that accelerates.
And the plan, the entire plan, the latest one that was just sent yesterday, is up on our website, on the town website. Okay, it's there, both the old plan, the two thousand nine plan, and the two thousand eighteen plan are up there for review. So they don't have to get a pile of paper, they can just go, go to the site, open the plan, find their, you know, find their area. And just, if they want to make, if they want to make an edit, then, you know, that's what I said, we're ninety-eight percent done. If they are happy with the content as it is, as it appears in the plan, then I would hope that they would write a letter of recommendation, you know, to the committee. Okay, or, actually, you know, maybe they should write it to you guys, I'm not sure.
Well, yeah. Either, either way, I can look at what we said the last time for the templates.
Yeah, my, my only concern, this is more for Chris and sort of the committee man, and the committee run, that if there is a committee that has to sign off on it, has to send an endorsement letter, that is to take the next step, that they can afford, they get it on their next agenda. Because I don't want it to generally come out.
Yeah, I know, it'll take, it'll take.
We don't need to sign off on it, then.
We won't.
Yeah, I should, you know, if all the boards agree that, you know, it's factually what, you know, that they contributed.
Yeah, and I think having a letter from this one would be appropriate, I'll confirm whether or not it's required, but I think in the past another committee has done that as well.
Right, and I think with some of the committees that are obligated to sign off on it, I think maybe a letter or recommendation should be prepared ahead of time so they can vote on it.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be anything elaborate, just, you know, we reviewed the two thousand eighteen OSRT, and we find it to be representative of our, you know.
But those would have to be voted on at the public meeting, that's my only point, that's my only point, is to make sure the plot's queued up.
Um, so we submitted DCS, hopefully they get us comments within a month, it depends on their, how many others they have before that, it can vary, it's generally about a month though. Typically, we don't receive too many comments back, so they can be pretty readily incorporated, and then finalized, get final approval to go to reproduction for copies for the town, and just submit the final versions to DCS. Typically, once we submit the draft to DCS, if they come back with comments, the town receives, in most cases, conditional approval. If there was a grant that you wanted to pursue in the interim between having your edits but not turning around the final draft, that will hold the town up from the second grant. That's how DCS has operated in the past, for updates like this that are, you know, pretty thorough.
And the recommendations that you have, including what you anticipate would need, an annual budget number are included in the plan?
Yes. Uh, the budget is not in.
That slide is not in.
Should we put it in?
I mean, if your recommendation is, you know.
It's a support item, it's a support item for the, for the action item.
It's not a specific budget, it's not, right, it's not typically included, it will say something like, the action item is establish a budget.
Yeah, it's in the action item.
We can include the budget, but I think if there, if it ends up changing, it might be more changing, it might be better to keep that as a separate live document for the town, but either way.
So, um, so, um, is a board, or do we need to make this committee, this board, get an implementation? Do we now, do we now make a, make a committee with the charity?
Well, I think it is a standing.
Right now it is a committee, yeah, I think we should absolutely talk about it, but not tonight, because I don't want to.
That's what would be our next step.
What you do already, yes.
Yeah, but there would be recharge.
We had some problems with, dropping off the committee during the year, we had some delays because of.
But what we could do is recharge, is recharge, execute certain things, and with how we might, with how we're some funding resources.
Well, you should, you should take a look at the goals and objectives, and the action items that are, it's nine pages of action items. Each goal has six to eight action items that, you know, we're going to be committed to achieving over the seven years. So, this committee, you know, it's, I'm very delighted with the, you know, the participation and the various segments of the town that are represented. It's a great, strong committee, and look forward to doing a good job.
So, um, I just assume that the Open Space Committee wants to maintain open space. Is there any recommendation as to how the town or people that are involved in this could acquire land if the land comes up for sale? For example, you know, you've got Ingram Park on the front, Ingram Park was done by the Cohasset Land Foundation. So the Land Foundation got lovely forty acres, they developed five and put the rest in.
In the, in the plan itself, we will be developing an inventory of open space. We will be making recommendations to Conservation Trust.
Katie, represent.
So we'll, we'll do the spade work, and identify, you know, open space, open spots or whatever. Try to put coalitions together to figure out how we make them available to public.
Yeah, we think that's a real important part.
No, that's integral to.
I just, you know, so the example, so the town has done this really well with Lincoln, you guys probably know what Lincoln's done. You know, they did this private-public partnership, they actually bought a shopping mall. And the cash flow from the shopping mall allows them to go acquire private land, and they've been putting it away for a long time. The other thing they did, though, is they also advocated for zoning restrictions in town. You know, they modified the zoning bylaws to allow for.
It's an action item under our development, you know.
Right, both those are really important components.
Their, their action items, they, we have advocates for that, so, yeah, we're definitely going to be having time.
They kind of have switched out, so has a great land program, they actually have staff that are funded by a cell phone tower that was put out. But it's very, very involved, so they're, yeah, we'll be looking at them.
And just as a way of wrapping up, one thing is that this whole plan gets dumped into the master plan.
That's correct. It wasn't adopted because of the master plan.
Things are going to be different.
Yeah, the plan is, and I've been working on the master plan and the Law Range Planning Committee, and all of those folks to try to get common information and all of that. That's what I needed, is working to try to get an introduction that's kind of the same from all of these plans, that describes the town. Wouldn't that be nice? Anyway, but I brought it up.
All right, thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Two, two. I'm sorry, you guys, you guys, you guys have a lot to do, can you take the time outside? Conversation.
All right, so I want to walk through the, the warrant, I think, I saw, I saw Donna come. All right, so, this is the working, start working draft, so I'll walk you through it starting on Article One. The amendment to the operating physical, so Don Hyatt, I'm sorry, Jason, let me review you better. The amendment, the single amendment to the, so Don's going to tie, he's been with the D R today. Uh, he's wrapped our free cash, state earnings. The number is, the number is, why don't you have, monitor?
Yeah, free cap again, these are all solid, and today, he's still.
Don Tisa, we got, we got a World Series game going on here, so let's give him the point.
One point six million for free cap, one million six twenty, water came there in seven hundred and thirty, two thirty, sewer is three thirty, three thirty one.
Hey, Don, congratulations on getting that done, and getting it done in October, that's great.
So, next step is, schedule A, is that what goes next? All come along. So, that's how we start, so Article One, one budget transfer.
One budget transfer, I didn't realize who, how, sorry. One item transfer, we're moving money from Permson Inspector to DPW, we need hiring an assistant admin in DPW. And we initially had funding from prior years for our, our manager from Permson Inspector, I forget his exact title. But since we no longer have that position, that money is being reallocated to the DPW to pay for these.
So one-time thing, and then next year it's going to be a one hundred seventy?
Yeah, so we ended up backfilling the position, vacant, in, in, so there are four steps.
So it's no new head count?
With the juggling staff. Okay, and if Don thought it better do it naturally. There is, I'm afraid, one unpaid bill.
Is that for sewer?
Unfortunately, our engineer, they're behind on billing, and was behind on billing, so it was the last piece from FY.
Okay, just a good question. Is, is this a contracted engineer?
There was a big, the sewer department is actively looking at its services.
That'd be about the fifth year running that they've been actively working on.
Yeah, but this time, I think, but this time it really.
This time it's different? There's a lot of history here, and, fair enough, thank you, so this is, this is now wrap-up from eighteen, which should have been in July.
Exactly.
It's good while it lasted.
You got a little one on that?
That's all right.
It's going to get done, and I don't want to, I don't want to, we honestly have come a long way, so we don't.
Yeah, I mean, there's always so much, Michelle did a great job reaching out, just seeing what we needed.
And we have, I, I know I've asked, we have zero defense with respect to the bill, because it was not presented on a timely basis.
I did take a look into some of, I don't know how the service agreement, doesn't say would require a bill or certain time period or anything.
Maybe that's the first place to start looking at it. So when was this contract executed?
Their contract, this can, we have a, the agreement was completed back.
Many years.
And it's a little fuzzy, I hate to say it quite that way.
Is it, is it perpetual? So, when's, when is the, when does the agreement end?
Well, it, 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 I think I don't have it in front of me, but I'm not sure that we actually have it, I think it's been almost a, a renewal, an agreement was gone for years, it's kind of like we have with Paul Sche. A year and a half.
No, I'm, I'm asking the question, fortunately, as, as the, as a co-manager, right, from a business standpoint.
I don't have a vote on the board.
No, you don't have a vote on the board, we certainly have votes on budgets, and this is one area where, and look, if, if that's, if those are the folks you want to hire, that's great. But the rules of the road are pretty straightforward, you don't show up six months after the, four months after the fact with a bill saying, oh my gosh, I forgot.
There's no question, they should not be, we purposely go through, I mean, cumber money. Legal bills and cumber, we were totally covered, and, and they should, they should, it's their, it's their.
Who does the contract, it comes back to us to write the contract?
Yeah, this is, this is an agreement, this is not of the kind of contract form, this is a predated one.
Okay, we're going to do that, so?
This is the, this is the late bill of birth.
Thank you.
I assume this bill wouldn't be so late, wouldn't be very soon, what was actually done?
No, it's from, it's the last half of FY eighteen, so services between January and December.
You know, it's all legitimate work, they did it better, and Michelle has done a tremendous job, and the Circulation has as well, helped beat the fire. It's disappointing, but it's, but it's also a good reminder of this whole situation.
Well, just because I feel obligated to say this, I mean, the whole idea when we went to town in two thousand and ten, two thousand and nine, and did joint management, was so that the enterprise funds of every department in town recognized that there was one way to do finance. That was through our financial, led by the town manager, so.
And we have a whole destruction, I mean, the great destruction, the great structure for three million dollars, what is needed, which is really what is the future, this is the first. I didn't even say this is the last.
This is as much finding as process, and so from a contractual standpoint, you know, if it's not locked down as to what the rules are with respect to performance, the expectations. Then it's, it's not a surprise that it's going to be sloppy. From, I recognize as a board, having said that, it's an enterprise, as opposed to a utility. And the board has governance, and we have a say in management, so, can we focus on that? Thank you.
Thank you.
Article three.
Article four.
I'm sorry, before you go away from that, these are the recommended allocations for civilization funds, open trust. What, what amount out of this are you intending to hold as unrestricted fund balance?
Six hundred, about five hundred thousand? We're spending about a hundred thousand. Which, which, the good news is that, cover the, there's any kind of terrible thing, but then it becomes available, spring's the new one. All right, so Article four, so, these are the one-time cost items. And again, the whole benefit we're talking about, that's concerning to the nation, so it's electronic checkups, it's like, it's using, so if you're using a boat, and it's the speed, the processing. It's not the boat, it's just the registration, now she likes it, she'll buy them, and we'll use Italian. Did you like it?
Did you like it?
Yep, so there you go, so there's one recommendation. And the road de-icing pilot project, they were capital last night, they thought it was a great idea, they also decided. And the road de-icing pilot project, they were capital last night, they thought it was a great idea, they also decided they have a lot of money, but they like the concept, they like the concept, and, uh, Jason talking.
Uh, so basically, we are looking at doing a pilot study for just one of the vehicles, um, of the six, um, sanding vehicles, to go through a, um, pre-wetting system. Basically, as the sand comes into the spreader tail, it gets pre-wet with a liquid, the icing. The benefits are pretty, um, are spelled out there. What it'll do is it'll keep more of the salt on growth, and should be ready to do a reduction in the actual amount of salt used, um, over time.
These are a lot, too. Not so far away.
Yes, and it's so penetrative, yeah, it, it starts acting as soon as it's, you know, means the, the reaction with the water in the environment, so, um, and this is, we're gonna pilot it with the most environmentally safe, um, alternative, which is ETA approved, um, for application using a, uh, molasses, food-grade molasses as a rusted, I mean, a corrosion inhibitor. So it's actually less corrosive to the salt, um, yes. So what is the basic idea here is this, pre-wets and treats, the salt, uh, before it's spreaded over the road. Yeah, therefore giving the benefit of staying there longer, it will, when it, if you're very, very mad at salt, you'll see the salt trickle out, so it'll less trickle out, more.
It's as wet as it's appropriate.
And then as soon as the stegron is already started to get, um.
Because of this, because of this liquid, is the treatment put into the salt at the, uh, truck level or?
You can, you can pre-wet the salt, you actually have a rebate phone, they're gonna, they actually get a load of pre-wetted salt for no additional cost, um, as a pilot two. Uh, that's, they can talk about that because it's technically free, um, but what it does is it'll basically sprays into the, um, material as it's coming out the sheet.
Yeah, that's the way we're gonna do this, that's the way we're gonna do this.
Yes, and this hundred dollars is for this project, it's a test. Yeah, it'll have a storage, it's, oh, it's one vehicle in, um, storage for the liquid.
So how are you gonna measure, so that's one, how are you gonna know?
Um, one will be results, you'll see one of the six routes will, will be able to tell if it's a, if it's better, um, melting, and also will be, then, we're gonna start with treating the exact same amount that we're currently putting down of salt sand mix, and then start to, uh, pull that back as time goes on.
So I assume you take pictures and do measurements?
My, my goal too is then to show that it is cost-effective too, like, are we getting bang for your buck, are we reducing salt enough on that route to then offset the cost of the liquid? Or indoor, if it's equal, but you're getting a better result, then, yeah.
What do you expect the duration to be?
The entire season of one.
No, 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 I meant, uh, on an application, uh, you know, rock salt has a duration of, uh.
It'd be the same duration, it'd be no, if, if anything, it might be better because it gets into the pores of the pavement theoretically, so you can actually react at a later date, if you didn't have a total event that took up all of the reactivity, then it can actually be, you know, if you see the pavement twice, because there was an event that's, it's also still in the pavement.
Wait, what do you, in the temper, effective temperature?
It's lower.
It's lower.
Negative forty six, I'm only, oh, it's on the backside of it, temperature range.
Great, I like that.
Thank, any other questions, uh, the hazard mitigation plan, update, uh, at least, it's, it's a, it's a, a parallel of the office base plan, and just a much shorter plan. And it's required in more proactive grants, or, or, I mean, the cost of producing, the cost of implementing, it has a, it's required, it has to be, it's expiring, it's expiring.
Is this something that once we complete this, like the other plans, though, open up opportunities for the funding?
Are they are approved, uh, with, okay, mitigation plan, I'm not, as a mitigation plan, the town does not qualify for FEMA, indoor MEMA grants.
Say no more.
So therefore, the town needs this, uh, we can use the public hearing process, that we, the town just went through with the MVP grant process that we did last spring. Uh, and that public outreach data collection can be transferred into the development, the update of the hazard mitigation plan, so it's a win-win. Uh, that the cost is really low for this type of play development with MAPC, they did, uh, they did the MVP program each night, and so we are using all the data collection. We probably love it, the same project we had on.
And the last one is, uh, ask market team, market to come up with the priority projects after, um, this cleaning at the library, some work at the library, some work in the schools, the nurse's station, apparently, that door forever.
At the scenic?
There is a, there is a door in the nurse's station. So, uh, there's a series of things like that, I think, um, I, I don't have that to, you know, they're going to have it on, and maintenance has been, I mean, it's been a high priority. And that, jump, get the jump started. So those are those four. The, um, the, advisor will hear tomorrow, so ultimately we'll get this alone on it tomorrow night, and you can butter it up. Scenic roadways, that's actually already, so Pete is here to talk about that. But actually, can I hold you for just one second? So, because this way I'm gonna release, I'm gonna release Jason, capital improvement project, so, we have the LED streetlight purchase, that is moving along really well. We've been courting very nicely with capital budget, I can comment on the process for that, uh, we're actually getting another test light. Our, our team has been courting Ralph, we're doing it in particular, and we have an interesting light, which is actually on the, we're gonna test it, and if it looks good, we'll be able to, I think, roll in, and I think, and get a green light. Town Hallish, the holder for the conversation, if it's gonna be any funny, we're gonna kind of, you know, the emergency generator.
Quick, the generator is, um, it got tabled by capital last night, it's a backup generator for the tight gate, um, so that if we lose power down there, we'll still operate, um. Because right now, we're trucking down the, um, mobile generator, ties up all resources, manpower, and the actual backup generator.
So this generator, yes, it's on a stand, we're going to be low, next to the existing control panel. The green one, the green box?
The big, uh, stainless steel box behind the, uh, behind the memorial. In the parking lot.
And, and capital tabled it, meaning they're gonna take it up at their next meeting?
I believe so, they're looking, we're looking at some alternative issues for that process.
We just had some questions, we had tabled, we're not doing it, as called, and I think the focus is, I think it's broad recognition that we need some solutions there. There were questions that, around maintenance of a jet, placing a generator there, for example, it's not set, and then it's eventually created something that you need to have on a regular maintenance schedule. So there were some questions around, would it be simpler for us to put, for example, a battery pack there, literally just have to lift the gate, drop the gate, drop the gate, it'll only happen once.
We are looking at battery backup as an option, but like I said to them, battery backup ends up being better than a twenty-five thousand dollar solution, we implement that, but, um.
So they're working on it.
So we don't have a view, we don't have a meeting, we can just.
But you'll have an opinion, so that we can take a vote.
Yeah, and we're all team up to have everything on, everything.
There were just questions, there were just questions.
I'm gonna jump to Jason's last, I have something to go, I have something to go, I'm sorry. So, do you want some of the Arno River Dam?
Arno River Dam, um, cost estimates, there's gonna be some, um, maintenance, it was in the approved by advisory, is the FY eighteen, water department budget. And then it became too late to implement it, the whole money, so, uh, they turned back last year, out of that line item, a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, um, out of their operating budget. The estimate has been, um, now that we're in the final design, to two hundred and forty thousand dollars, and some removing of growth in the earth and dam, some repairs for the fish ladder, and some fencing. So just miscellingly, it's maintenance, it's not really a capital project, but it's, uh, more of a maintenance project.
Maintenance to the two hundred and forty thousand.
I mean, it's not, I mean, it's, I'm not, it's, you're, you're significant project.
So can I ask you a dumb question? Why is this not part of the department's question?
It is. It was, and it's coming out of.
Coming out of what? Um, capital did vote on this. Okay.
Any other questions on that?
No, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks again.
I will give you the, I will give the updates of Scenic Roads, six five, people talk about them, advisories recommend it, rule five, one, seven, nine, and the planning board is recommending it, rule five.
That will be two years, and of course, like, we'll force a zoning, uh, bylaw to drop King Road, uh, this past, uh, this day's spring, we've just received an application to drop, uh, five roads, Road of Scenic Roads, to the Atlantic, through some roads, uh, South Main Street, Main Street, and also Nickle Road. They, all the applications came through the decisionless process, which means there had to be thirty signatures, fifteen of whom had to live on the roadways. Uh, the planning board had public hearings, two in particular, and, uh, one for the original four, and then one for Nichols Road, and all five roads promoted immissively, uh, by the planning board to be positively fourth. Uh, to put on the agenda for the next upcoming town meeting, which could be this special town meeting in December, uh, can kind of get into the, I'm, I'm not too sure how far you wanna get, get into the weeds, uh, of Scenic Road.
So the rumor is these are all gonna become bike paths, close to local traffic.
Correct, so it really kind of sticks trees, and also stone walls, and, you know, run along, you know, these factors.
And it.
Only in the public right of way.
Correct, only in the public right of way.
Does it discriminate between, uh, historic or?
Twenty years.
Twenty years, thank you.
Twenty years, uh, as a right here, the, uh, protection of stone walls, the teams are raised the stones, cut, the excess of all, dry, fit, or mortared, and the excess is twenty years old, otherwise deemed by the historic permission to be, uh, historically significant. So that's in the definition of a stone wall over the bylaw.
And then the trees, the trees essentially protect the, uh, removal.
Removable, trimming, okay.
Uh, usually, uh, they're working in handle for about four, four or five years, uh, every year at a annual basis, uh, national group would come through, usually in the winter time, they would have a certified arborist. Uh, they would come through with a list of trees that needs to be trimmed, they need to be removed, and there'd be a public hearing with the planning board, the national group would come in, uh, and run through one by one, why, you know, each tree, it needs to be removed, indoor trim. Then the planning board, more appropriately, the tree ward, and also was involved in the process.
So, so, this, this is actually important, this is a, a, a real life possible scenario, so if there are tree limbs on, let's say this gets adopted, and the streets become, um, the scenic roadways. So let's just pick Beach Street, uh, there are limbs, overhanging wires, which are prone to collapse and storm.
In order for a natural grid to remove or to move, or do this.
The necessary work with those limbs, they would have to go through a public process.
Correct.
Does it prevent, prevent them from doing it, it just has to go through the appropriate.
Correct, it's typically the tree ward in, uh, we're in the process, we're doing studies, as far as the partnership with the planning, with the planning office, on indoor, in natural grids, usually in the conversation, uh, proactively in handle, we should go out and knock on the door of the existing neighbors, uh, and say, this is what's going on. Uh, what is required by, uh, the regulations, is a public hearing notice is stapled to the tree, uh, fourteen days prior to the public hearing, and also a public hearing notice has to be drawn, uh, go as a matter in this case. Uh, one, fourteen days prior to the public hearing, the water within two weeks, uh, within two weeks leading up to that public hearing, so very similar to a planning board public hearing process, however, in this case, of, uh, actual, uh, uh, public hearing notice is stapled to the tree.
You're per, 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 per.
I always, I always live, while I always put a plastic tree.
Scat the tree. On behalf of saving. If the hearing itself is in an office, it's not a.
It's a planning board's.
Sounds like, seasonally. Go through, gather up a bunch of trees, first of all, only, first of all, only trees that are on scenic roads. So it sounds like, it sounds like a gold field, gather up, full-size trees.
Do it all on one hearing.
Correct, correct, so it's a usually annual process, uh, the town, do it to, typically, the town will have a couple trees they need to either remove, indoor trim.
The town has to adhere to this.
Correct, so the town and, and now it's a utility, now it's a utility, correct.
So can we find, so is there, is there a, a way of penalizing?
There is a penalty in the, in, in the regulations, uh, and also there's a restoration policy, which is on the back page. If your caliber trees are holding measurements, uh, that, you know, it's a formula for that place.
Be bad at your apparel.
Correct.
Does the board feel like they have enough information, and with the recommendations of advisory planning to recommend this article, or go motion, or? Just get it over with, is there a motion to recommend town meeting, Article five?
Sorry?
All in favor?
One down.
One down, one down.
Okay, thank you, Pete.
Just some reading time, going to bed, just some information, talks about the regulations, if you have any questions or concerns, I can help you to the back, but I don't have to answer anybody. Yes, that's all, the tree heads, the back, the tree warding, can step in, anything that is gonna be in the public right of way, in harm to the public, to the public, that tree is taken out, in no public.
Right, thank you, right.
Thank you so much.
You see Kerry?
Yes, no, no, Kerry, no, no.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Get Phil's thoughts.
Yeah, yeah.
Are you the tax clerk or something? Are you just, yes, you're just bodyguard.
I'll be really quick, I do want a, um, proper thing, hopefully he has the proper equipment with him, um, so I'm asking, like, make it a nice. So I'm asking for the board to, um, support or, uh, just under thirty-four thousand dollars, to equip officers with safety, um, that being an active, uh, issue to reach officers, officers in the trends, uh, among law enforcement, it's the last two years, and it's just sort of amazing, it's like, yeah. And as part of the, um, partners with Shrek, and the Kingdom Police, and the Fire Department, actually, as well, uh, cohesive fire, with helmets and vests for their, each seed in their apparatus. The helmets and vests, something we don't have in our offices, is, um, most recently the last year, they've, they've been sent into situations where they have been actively, and they're not properly equipped. Right now, every officer is, uh, soft body armor, under their shirt, they wear shirts, they wear. So they wear soft body armor, that, that soft body armor is issued to every officer, and they wear it on the beginning of the year. So they wear soft body armor, that, that soft body armor, um, is issued to every officer, and they wear it under the gun, you don't see it. So, it's actually very uncomfortable, and warm to wear in here, but ceramic, yeah, it's ceramic, but that'll stop. The, the type of ammunition that we carry, it'll, it'll stop, it stops a bullet, stops one of our guns. Uh, doesn't help with any small weapon or some type of rifle. Um, so what we're looking to do is issue, um, a tactical vest, uh, for officers, a kit, a bag, that every officer would get. And then keep with them and bring with them on duty, um, to, you know, if they went into a situation where, um, there's actually an active shooter. Uh, like we did in, uh, Marshville, in, uh, Long Island Way, uh, recently, um, it would protect them from those types of situations.
So that would be something like, like the firefighters, they put their gear on when there's that kind of call.
Exactly, now our firefighter specifically, um, put a tactical bulletproof vest over their firefighting equipment. Uh, it's just a sign of the times.
And if it was an active shooter, it'd go to a hot zone.
So our fire department has this equipment already?
On the truck, not on the truck.
Gotcha.
Each seat in the truck has, has a, um, has that equipment.
How many kits does this require?
Uh, twenty-five.
For each officer, you have your.
Each officer, each officer. Be issued, um, a kit to keep with them.
You would kind of come to work with it?
Yeah, they keep with them, and then.
So something you, they keep with them, they keep on there all the time?
Yeah, correct, yeah. Obviously, in their own car, and the reason for that, you know, it's not really feasible to, to buy one for every car, because, you know, the gas mask fits differently, the helmets fit differently. The vests have to be adjusted, um, to do that in a situation where you're in distress, it would be very tough. And also the gas mask, um, it's a very individual thing, or someone with an eyeglass or something like that, so we have to make certain accommodations after that.
Chief, what's the, uh, expected life, uh, of a set of equipment for an individual?
Twenty years, twenty years, twenty years.
So.
Soft body armor's only five.
Likewise, is this, assuming that, that an officer stays, of course, they keep that armor, but if the officer were to leave, is that retained by the department?
Yes, taken back into our.
Okay.
And, um, and, um, uh, yeah, it's, you know, we, we have a couple of helmets right now in the back of the cruisers, but, you know, they're sort of one size fits all, and it just doesn't, you know, it fits me, it's gonna fit.
What is this, what is this essentially consist of? Essentially consist of, the vest, and what can you say?
Yeah, um, it's, it's, it's a bag, a little bit smaller than a hockey bag, it contains a, uh, the bag itself, a raid jacket, you know, like a nylon pull-over jacket. That says police on, on the back and front, the gas mask, the ballistic helmet, in the, in the, uh, uh, a fact, that Donald, this is a, sent to the, uh, the one drive. Yeah, yeah, so that, that sort of the vest looks like the, uh, the helmets, uh.
Something you'd say like a SWAT team.
Uh, well, SWAT teams have, I mean, even better stuff, yeah, but this is, this is something, you know, more geared for patrol. SWAT guys have the real threat, um, stuff that protects a lot more.
And there'll be a, some kind of training program that goes on, could you speak on that for a minute?
Yeah, we train, uh, three times a year, firearms, so we, um, rolled into that, we have the training come up in December. Um, so we, we roll into that, and then the one in there rolling it again, they do one during the summer. But it's all part of our use of force training, as a matter of fact, we just, did use the force training back yesterday, uh, August, we revamped our policy. Actually updated our use of force policy, says it to Meyer as well, for a discount.
Well, it's depressing, but.
Yeah. Well, we wanna have the. I have, um, just, you know, so the board knows, they've seen, uh, check of the project, project ten thirty-three is where we received, um, things like Humvees from the military.
Talked about that earlier.
I heard that, um, they actually have Humvees available.
No.
Yeah, I don't know.
Helicopters?
No, you probably could get helicopter, but helmets and masks, you know, that is just, it's not something that's ever available. We looked on, it's online, uh, application, and have a, we actually called, we called up the hall, and they said, you might as well forget it, and stuff, it's just, it's just. Yeah, one of the stuff.
Yeah, one of the stuff.
They started here with.
Yeah, here we.
Duck boat.
Duck boat.
Yeah, you should check the story, find out if there's something.
Yeah, I was kicking duck boats.
Commander Chris.
Yeah, what's it, yeah, two fifty, coming up.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
We have an, uh, we need a.
Summary.
We need a summary.
Alright, alright.
Um, so this is gonna be in front of, this is gonna be in front of campus, tomorrow, tomorrow, and Capitol on Monday.
So the next meeting will.
Yes, I just figured, we're all, I just figured we'll. Okay.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thanks for being here.
The last, um, article, was, third of articles, so I have a contract back, um, on the acquisition of property. It's on the terms and conditions, uh, at this point, it, it's really not exactly a special, unless you wanna talk about it.
No.
So, yeah, the active price is three fifty, seven point two plus eight. Um, the terms are that, um, no deposit, it's all contingent on ten million approval, forty-five day, uh, due diligence process. Then once you get back on the line, and you're doing testing or whatever, with the closing, and with the closing, that's how. So, uh, I can circulate.
Okay, we must have all needed, need already.
Well, for bonding, we gotta recommend, we gotta recommend bonded for the short term, I mean, doesn't mean what, I mean, doesn't mean what we're gonna do.
Doesn't mean we're gonna do it.
Um, I, I, I expect to fund it on the short term, on the short term, the money to ourselves. Unless we fund it with.
I, I, this is one of those areas where, first of all, to me, it never makes sense to, to use debt to buy one, period. It just doesn't make any sense. Um, acquisition of the price is reasonable, we've got, uh, an unrestricted fund balance. And frankly, the bigger question that I haven't thought about, but, in that forty-five day period, and we assure ourselves, this is a usable tract for some town.
There's, there's one, there's three, it has to be explored for public works, and then, as we're talking about, those respect is open space.
Absolutely qualified.
Exactly, and, uh, so.
It goes all the way back to.
And, and there's, there's, there's conservation trust lands, they're signed, so in a, in a purely preservation aspect, this could be acquired. Analyzed, and then potentially partnered with land trust, and, and CPC, and the technical. The CPC might could be.
CPC could be.
That said, I, there's, there needs to be more analysis done. There, there's, uh, it's already, our public works people feel confident enough, they can do something, um, with at least some part of land. We wouldn't use all seven acres, the blanket, now in the back, you know, you could put dry, and there's some offland in the back.
There's some offland in the back.
Um, but you could put, you could raise up some of the land, uh, do some repl, repl, some wetland replation. And then, if nothing else, a small building, a parking, a small, a fire station, a space to store vehicles, like the buses. Public works vehicles could be staging area for, for public works vehicles, or ambulances.
Ambulances.
Yeah, yeah, um, but, but there has to be a lot more analysis done, as to whether that's feasible, what we call, in terms of the land use.
Land use.
As far as, it would have to be more engineering done, as to what it would cost to make that happen. But either way, it's, either way, it's definitely.
The town's right at first, for sure.
Town's right at first, for sure, it's definitely, uh, I think, I'm, 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 that is, no.
I'm almost surprised when we have these discussions, why, if we hit too bogged down on what we can do with land, or something like this now, because we own this, and we own it forever. This stuff can be filled in thirty, forty, fifty years from now, I always think in my mind, it was in half of Boston, built into the hybrid, so I, I never get myself getting hung up on. The fact that we can't do anything with, and now doesn't bother me, and it's ways to fill this stuff, and this is something for the future. This is something for the future. Uh, second thing is, I'd be supportive, Steve was suggesting, uh, doing this other free cash, we get a fifty percent of all, and we don't have to bond it, I think. Steve made good points here, so when we do this, I just assume that way myself, I'd be supportive of that, uh, someone else can make a motion for a listing. I just, I think that idea is correct.
Three fifty's, yeah, that's a good price, that's a good price.
I mean, and that was our discussion, previous, was that we felt was worthy, this was worthy. Do we need to decide tonight on the funding mechanism, because I, I always wanna talk about it a little bit more, in terms of whether to use free cash. And what that free cash availability actually is, which is, I think it's like six hundred, minus five, minus three fifty, that really leaves us nothing for.
Well.
I, I just wanna have that. I just wanna have that conversation.
Yes, we, so, yes and no, we can't do anything with it, only have anything with it. So by annual town meeting, if we decide to do something else in the land, or spin something off, we can pass those with the taxes. We're, as, we're, and CPC to consider funding, some of it for open spaces, whatever, so, or at that point, the tax decides, borrow for sure. It doesn't, it doesn't, you can then, the free cash, well, well, let me talk about it with them.
Oh, also, if we're gonna, address that, which I think we should, I'd like to get the advisory, the advisory committee on, on particular issues, so.
I can't, I can't.
Yeah, but, but I'd like to hear what they have to say, what they have to say with the taxes, and that door, so, or that door, so, or that door. I think that, that should tie their advisement to us on this financing.
So, um.
So, so let's just, we'll come back.
Yep.
So, so let's just, we'll come back. But I just, I just, yeah, it's great, yeah, it's great.
I think our last meeting, we decided to withdraw.
No, no, you, you just talked about it, but, and again, I don't wanna speak for John, but I, the advisor committee has all the same questions, as you said. And maybe you got an idea, however, we need, so I think they recommend, they didn't actually vote for saying.
Is this a special meeting?
Right, right, because it is a part, because it is.
I think we, I don't know, I'm gonna take it off, I'm gonna take it off. Uh, community preservation, uh, Monday night, and they made recommendations to do two projects that funding fell off, on Sawyer Street, work, uh, behind a library, Milliken Field. It also voted, well, you can find this, uh, two hundred thousand, two hundred thousand dollars of funding for additional, additional. Not the trench, not the.
For the, for the, the new, the replacement unit, if you will, um, what is now the trench, so try to lead. Next to the fire station, so how, so, uh, uh, disabled people, and they're gonna be relocated into a new, brand new building in the back. And there's a delta between what was appropriated, I believe, town meeting, to a hundred thousand dollars last year, sale of the building.
It seems to be. Who bought the house, the house went to a private party?
A private, private, planning flip, yeah.
And that money is back, that money is back.
So the, that money was six hundred something, and, and so whatever it's gonna cost in the building, there's a two hundred thousand dollar delta, so it would be recommended out of the four thousand, four thousand, part of the CPC.
That, that kid was, uh, very sudden, that very sudden. Alright, so that's a warrant, so that's a warrant.
We're in good shape, other than, which we'll, we'll come on our next one.
Yeah, one, yeah, because the advisor will pick up the other one, I, I'll give it to him tomorrow, it's the thing more, or cut out.
Okay, um, so, um, at Lightning Speed, the next one was, um, we had been asked by Cable Advisory a month ago, a month and a half ago, to recommend special counsel.
Bill Solomon, the specializer in this, uh, the big sticky issue was staying, the capo, the cable, the people can pay, I talked to Bill Solomon, said it's not a problem, all you can, so they'll. And, um, I think, the, uh, retainer given was in the package last time.
I probably understand. It's in this, yeah.
Um, I had a nice conversation the other day, I think, by the way, time's, time is down all week, we only have six months, and the first month, five, so we gotta get it. Okay, so I'm comfortable with it.
Okay, so is there a motion to recommend a special counsel for the, uh, purpose of the cable, like the CPN, contract negotiations, um, special counsel Bill Solomon?
Come on, second move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Tell me your direction.
Um, so I have three days set aside, the first, fifteenth, the first twenty-ninth of November, for forums, talking about financial ones. First, I had all of the, we had all of these for any person, I figured, uh, on the fifteenth to twenty-ninth, we could talk about, some combination of capital. Long-term maintenance, and, and revenue projections.
So why don't we just move to town hall discussion, uh, we've got.
Yeah, we get to, we, so, I, I only, I was, I was sending it for the first, second time, to get the warrant, but if that's not, I don't want an issue, we can do something else, we can do something else. So, well, I, I just have those three days locked up, for these open, for these forums to talk about, uh, budgets, so.
So would you, will you, would you, will you use something other than town hall, for November first?
On the street purpose. Yeah. I will.
Um, um, you know what, I, you know what, I.
Is that gonna be selected? No, no, it's open, they're like these open forums, things that we count for, yeah, so we'll talk about it, and, and, uh.
Full preparation of the budget.
Yeah, we can, yeah, we can.
Can we hold off on, um, um, make, setting any of these, those three dates are set?
I just haven't, I just haven't.
I just haven't, I just haven't.
Yeah, let's, let's go forward and, and, let's talk, only because I am gonna be out of town.
Only because I am gonna be out of town.
Potentially two of those, essentially two of those, so.
So, I, I, I just, I'm just laying them out there, so because, I, I gotta get some kind of conversation, some numbers, uh.
Absolutely, absolutely, work on those, um, and our next select, and full meeting is on the seventh.
So, uh.
Correct, so we know we have to say John, we have to.
Say John, and then you gotta wrap.
And we'll wrap up the warrant, and wrap the warrant.
Second, um, we have a great, thank you to Jack for plugging in, Deborah Thompson, she's a, a long-time town resident, spent a lot of time in England, she's come back. Wants to volunteer to help finalize your project, um, I'm looking forward to it, I think she, she has some great experience, and getting someone who wants to volunteer to help with town is awesome. So, uh, uh, all I need is, is a date, so that I can actually call, we can take it in the next couple of weeks, and we can try, obviously not a lot. So, does that work?
Yep.
Yeah, could we include November first as one of those dates, just in case that's the only, that's the only.
Absolutely, yeah. So I, I mean, yeah, yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, I can just, yeah.
The fact that November first works for.
November first works for. Yeah, because we had that, because we had that.
What's that day?
Thursday, Thursday.
Well, I'll tell you what, I'll.
Yeah, yeah.
We'll give you lots of coffee.
Tell you what, why don't you guys just go and sleep in the second.
There you go.
Um, and, um, that's because of the.
Great day.
Okay, uh, Slackman update.
I lost it, I lost it.
Paul?
Paul?
I, I just wanna remind you, so that, uh, sorry, I had to, I told Carol I would, if you didn't, uh, that, um, voting, early voting, early voting has started. Available during regular business hours at town hall, except for the day before election, I believe. And there is also a special Saturday voting, this Saturday, October twenty-seventh, from eight AM to noon, you can come into the town hall office, and the first floor town hall and vote. It's also, October twenty-seventh, it's also, you ought to take that day, and take that earlier, so.
Take your drugs back, go.
Do, do it all, uh, this weekend.
Yeah, the last, in the last day of vote here is November second, is that Friday.
Sorry, so November the second, which is next, uh, that's the last time.
So what? That's if it's the last, it's a Friday, and then, so you have this two, this week and next week, including the middle Saturday.
For open, for open.
Friday till Monday.
Doing the rest of the business, seven o'clock on Tuesdays until Thursday, Monday, Wednesday, Thursday until one o'clock.
And then regular, and then regular.
When, what do you, that's seven, uh, seven to eight.
Seven AM to eight. Alright, Jeff?
A sec.
Steve, um, is there a motion to approve the nomination of September eighteen, September eighteen, there's a, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, no topics, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.